It's o'clock, so we'll open the meeting. We look at the minutes and we sign that, we'll get there. Minutes, we need a motion to accept the public announcement of minutes of June 12th and June 13th.
I wasn't here, but.
Oh, yeah, you weren't here.
And that's why I didn't buy you.
I'll second. Any discussion, any changes to that?
I just put my agenda. I just can't go forward.
I know, me either.
I need more time.
Alright, if there's no changes to those, then I'll call. I gotta get my meeting again. Give it a little bit.
It's been a bit.
All in the favor of approving the minutes for June 12th and 13th, can you put your mouse over?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. You guys could do thumbs up if you need to.
You got ten.
There you go. Perfect.
I saw Wayne's.
Well, there it is.
Thank you.
So moved, okay. Next, we have citizen comments. Does anyone in the room have any comments for us?
Welcome back, everybody.
Yes, thank you. Any last citizen comments online? Do you have anybody, Karen, Amy, and Kendra?
Who knows?
No citizen. Superintendent's report.
Well, hi, everybody.
Hi.
Great to have you all back. I'm sorry for the three-part agenda packed out this afternoon, but obviously everything that we've been doing over the last couple of months. There's a lot in there. You do have my report with a number of items in there giving you some heads up. I think the one that we really want to spend a little time on, although there are a couple that we want to spend. Certainly, the notice of attending first students, right? In the sense of hit lines that we've done with the first student. So. What, this has happened before, we received a letter, I think that links the letter to W. One. We received a letter from a team, not even from first student, and we still have no communication. Truly told us that it's not something that we need to be hyped about. What Labor does is uses every opportunity to try to get more third-party people, planning spenders, to lobby for them. It's a pretty common tactic, and I think that's exactly what Team Dad's had, that is what he uses. We spoke with a couple of Labor attorneys who are keeping an eye on this around state because. We also went through the C of the document. So, one of the things we want to do is not get, there's no use to ban right now. They are at the table. What we would like to do however, is to be proactive, share the information with our parents, that in the event of a disaster, we can assure them, it's okay, Labor, parents, and not concern unless we get more information and it comes. If they, there should be some purpose maybe for to bring this to support as a backup plan. We're working on, you know, talking about a backup plan, don't have much to work with in this order of state. We did have a transportation company which helps us, but it's more than them all.
Yeah. Wouldn't that be fun?
Might be.
Right? So, I'm pretty comfortable right now, knowing where we are, that we're only dealing with the team's letter and nothing from first student. Should we get something from first student, or do you know that all through the board to talk about, or seriously want to conduct a committee? I just didn't want to do that with the principals, so you were aware. This happened, obviously, and I just think we're going to be considering that. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. Any questions about that, any concerns about that?
Are we going to send out letters, are we going to do an all-call about it, or are we going to mail it?
Yeah, I think what we'll do is request the, this is the general message and ask. That's just to show us what happens. I don't think it's like, well, that. We'll come back, by the way, but it'll be down to the board in a more.
Yeah, yeah.
So however we can like. Strategic planning is, to the next step, I met with a person who's interested. Structure of our planning will be a steering committee, which is non-decision-making. And what I'd like this steering committee to do is this person from the community of North North in the world, has native interest in doing the work, but also is connected with several areas. Two board members and myself. So the steering committee really is facilitating the process, helping to schedule things that we're not necessarily decision-makers. We're active participants as one of many people involved with it. But it really becomes the board's decision to plan the security plan. I certainly, as we've talked about, the ball is here, roles are not naming the person that I've spoken with, it's like a different way.
Yeah.
This person would be, I think, a logical chair of this steering committee that would be able to lead us as an effective third party. And then continue to, yeah, we have about twenty people who are interested in working on the teams. We don't want those teams to get too large because they'll get a little. So we think that now we're in background, it's. As we get closer to school, starting at how we even. We're thinking of seven people. And then.
Right.
If we want to run specific teams, then that's, that's they. Their whole job is to gather information. But using our portfolio of learning, as I know it starts, so appealing how we're achieving these five qualities to fulfill the burnout. It's, the strategic play process is really all about, where are we according to you, where are we according to people in town? Versus the council. So gathering those data, picking all the information, voting in such a way that we identify some common goals that the community has in place, goes for priority areas. And then creating some action in this and finding some new action. That's what we take over for security. We come to the board because, and again, this is a year-long process, we come to the board by goal next May. And then we have each school create a scorecard for the following four years that will measure their performance towards the goals that are set. The board would finalize that, because there may be some budget. So that would actually be a budget plan. So while it's a one-year process, it technically is two. What I, what I'd like to do is, in a way I explained it to the principal, the chairman, the two chiefs. Definitely it's known to develop a significant, early pre-holmes. And then there's discussion of some development that the process is down that above that. Six hundred acres. In fact, that's significant project. And it will include both commercial and music. Businesses. Which may mean, we need people to work there. Which means there's most likely to be a growth in some of those development. That's a ball for those. We want to explain a role. Whenever it's interesting, we're purchasing establishing. We have five. We have stuff together to do. That's the right. Trying to get that. But for years after. We're adjusting so important to the direction of the town and the program. So you want. Would like to have an orientation meeting for the steering committee. Next Monday. Let's say that.
Yeah.
But really quick thought, just as a grouping exercise for two board members, the chair and myself. April, I think it would be really helpful if you were part of that steering committee.
I'd like to be, so.
And one other member. Or part of that.
Sounds super interesting, so I would. That's one I might be interested in doing.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's definitely up to the board to decide on the two members, but I, I, I think that's a great fit. Because I have another district level committee that like to support on the one that I'll talk about. That would be enough.
Okay. Right.
So.
Do you want to commit our members now?
That'd be great.
So we don't forget to go back to it. Can, did you guys get all that?
Okay, so actually, we have not been able to hear anything really, and we thought it was on us, so we were like trying to fix it, but then Justin must have just done something. Because you guys just gave it crystal clear now, and we can hear everything.
He's nodding his head yes.
I don't know what you want us to vote on, because we couldn't hear.
We made you weigh in the chair of like seven committees.
Yeah.
You guys are going to be so busy.
You all know better than that.
So the strate- strategic.
Just keep sending me the reminders, I'm going to miss them.
And what was it that you guys were talking about?
So this, just, I can't say that word.
Strategic planning.
Thank you.
Steering committee.
Steering committee.
Oh, I read about that, yeah?
Okay, so there, so two board members, I'd like to be one of them, and then one of, one of the other.
Perfect.
Kayla has volunteered that she'd like to do that, I don't know about.
If everyone is okay with it, if someone else.
So, yeah, no, that's great, sounds good.
That's good.
Don't you say, no more on my list, got it hurt.
And Wayne, you're good with Kayla? Or did you want to volunteer, it's up to you?
Yep.
Okay.
Nope, I've got enough.
Yeah. So, Mark, you're good?
I'm good.
With that, okay, so we just, do we need a motion to accept April and Kayla as the board representatives to the strategic planning? Committee?
Plan, steering committee.
Steering committee, that's a word I was researching for. Who wants to make that?
I make a motion that we accept April and.
Kayla, right?
Kayla to the strategic planning committee.
Alright.
Fantastic.
Any more discussion on it?
I'll second that.
I was going to say thank you, because it'd be weird for me to second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Aye. So moved.
Fantastic, thank you. So we've looked to hold Monday night at five o'clock, that is in your calendar, we'll do it right here.
Okay.
Should take more than an hour and a half to really just kind of organize and vision out what orientation would look like in September, and plan a schedule, and just kind of get a lay of the game. Thank you, that's super helpful. The other. Update on tuition exploratory committee. As you know, Winchester is no longer going to be attending Keene High School after 2027. The two attorneys between Winchester and Keene are ironing out some details in what that looks like. As everyone knows, the question in the air is if students enroll at Keene in 2026, 27, will they be permitted to finish, or will they be permitted to elsewhere? That's the negotiations going on right now, so.
Like they're ninth graders, you mean, if they go in at ninth graders?
So, yeah, so our current, the current sixth graders from Winchester would be freshmen.
Right.
And they would like to know, do we get to stay in our high school?
Right.
If we don't want to, can we go somewhere else? So that's the work being done now, without getting too much away from public sessions over there, but it is an ongoing discussion, so. I think that we, we don't necessarily need a tuition exploratory committee meeting just yet, because I don't think we have any new information to share. But I will keep, I stay in touch with the superintendent over in Winchester, so.
That's good.
We, we will have. Some news that we're able to move on. I think, I think, they're, they're, this is all public because we've had public meetings, they're looking at five schools. Us, Pioneer Valley, Franklin County Tech, Menadoc, and remaining at Keene. And then they're also doing kind of a hypothetical of what would it look like to reopen there. Karen Thompson's also on exploratory committee, so. You know, we just, we've got like two or three meetings. But the minutes are public, the meetings are public, so anything we want to know or share, and so I'll continue to report back to the board on what's happening. Lastly, other than what I'd already written in my report, I think it's important that we recognize one of our own board members. That the Congressional Coalition on Adoption Institute recognizes and wants to honor and celebrate Kendra Gartner's tremendous work in the adoption, foster care, and child welfare community. She's been named a 2024 Congressional Coalition on Adoption Institute Angel and Adoption Honoree from New Hampshire with Senator Maggie Hassan and Senator Jeanne Chikin, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And both senators chose her, just says.
Nice.
Not, not a surprise. Unfortunately, in she can't attend our September board meeting, and I don't know if she'll be able to zoom in for that, but she'll be actually visiting Washington DC and going up to Capitol Hill. So, look out Capitol Hill.
She's coming.
I will not be there the September meeting, I will actually be in my, I just got my schedule, so I will be in my meetings until about nine thirty that night, so I will not be.
You better not.
I know. They did.
Tired. That is past your bedtime.
It is definitely so.
Fantastic, it's fantastic, it's fantastic.
No, thank you so much.
The last item I can, I can share because I'm not going to give out any, any secrets, in regard to. School security and student safety. One of the, there are two things that we're looking to do, the first is on our own campus, we convene our school security committee, on which we'd love to have one board member. Just, it's not a board committee, but it is a meeting that is closed to the public, because it does fall under our S N I D one, eight, two, three, I, where we talk about specific. Security issues relative to student and staff safety. We'll meet three times a year, it'll, it'll bring in our first responders, so our chief, if there does need for police and fire, Homeland Security Department, Health and Services, our two principals, myself. Mr. Pluss, I've asked the chair, and he has accepted, and he's involved with it prior. I have experience in having these meetings as well. And our whole point is to get ourselves together as a community, kind of regroup on. Our, not just our emergency operations plan, which we're going to file, but get down to brass tacks on, is our infrastructure our hardscape, or why? Are our processes for evacuations where we want to go? I'd like us to move toward ALIS, which is a response system that's widely used in schools and other large other spots where events would take place. Then from that, to really organize ourselves much more concisely, I'm still not comfortable. The other piece is a regional response team, which will involve six school districts, six towns, their police chiefs, a number of people, so homeland, security, transportation, hospitals. Anybody that would respond to some type of attack or event on a school campus. And the whole point of that is to get police agents, law enforcement agencies, and first responders used to each of those campuses. So for instance, in the event that something happened in Chesterfield, they need to ship students out of there to reunification. The best thing for them to do would be go to another school campus nearby and have folks go there. But the staff from Chesterfield are not coming to run that reunification, right? Let's say they're coming here, we would want to be familiar with whatever the procedure is, and so try and streamline those reunifications procedures. We also want to give agencies, so our responding agencies are naturally our county sheriff's department, our state police, interstate agreement, our local town. All opportunity to be inside each of those six schools, to be a little bit familiar with the rest of the schools, in the event they have to respond to it. They have some training, some availability to be able to. So, that's a bit of a bigger task. So far, both Chief Rice in Winchester and Chief Evans in Inser are totally on board. Chief Rataj was on board when he was here, now Captain Rataj in Winchester, so there's some carryover there. And I think it's going to be a lot better for the southwest corner, because I feel forgotten down here. Again, not a hundred percent.
We are, we totally.
We definitely are.
With where we are in that response, that, you know, it would be too chaotic, and there'd be no proactive planning, and that is a bad recipe in the event something happens. So, we can do something about it, so that I'd like to do, but for our local, our school campus one, I was thinking of Mark.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's all Mark or Wayne.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be real interested in it.
Okay, not, not that Wayne wouldn't be really good at it, but I know the facilities piece is a real important aspect of why you're on the board, Mark, when we had our conversation. And grounds and so forth, you have a good knowledge, work knowledge of that, I think it'd be really helpful.
Plus, I don't think you have too many committees.
No, I don't.
Yeah, and it's not, and it's not a subcommittee of the board, it's, it's a board representative joining us, and it would be during, during the day, so we'll have to find a way to work that in for you. Would not be an evening commitment, mainly because of the number.
And I have Monday and Tuesdays off anyway, so.
Sounds like we're going to do it Monday or Tuesday.
Well, if the board accepts, right?
Yes, yeah, for sure, so, so that's, that's that piece, I did not include that in my report, because that development is critical.
So do we want to make a, make that recommendation now for Mark, if, if you guys are good with Mark being on that committee?
Yep.
Yep, I'm good.
Right. So, I just need a motion?
I'll make a motion to.
Have Mark represent us at the.
Mark represent us on the strategic, or not strategic, the.
Security committee?
Student safety.
That.
That.
Kendra, you want a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Mark.
Any questions on our report?
I had written down a couple of things. Right. Oh, so the two teacher positions at the elementary school, did we fill those?
I believe our principal of the elementary school will have that in her.
In her report, so I'll ask it then. And I'll also ask my next one then, too, then.
Sure.
I think that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, let me scroll down. Business administrator report.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have my report. Little more lengthy than, than usual, and I do have a couple of things to add to that as well, but.
Jane, could you just move the microphone closer to you, because your report, I, I was kind of confused on a little bit, so I want to make sure I can hear you, sorry.
That's okay, ask away.
Oh, perfect. Perfect, thank you.
And I just, I guess I'm super bummed about the free lunch situation, and I feel like we could have done more. I feel like we could have put the work in to amp up those applications to do that for our families, so I am really disappointed with that decision.
I believe that the opportunity may arise again after next year, because I don't know that your, your graphics are going to change, your demographics. We have been trying to get those apps back since COVID, and it's become impossible, as you see with the increase of your debt, people are like, well, should I have to go back? You know, I don't need to be that way, but it's the honest to God truth, that's all over the state. And no line of sight from me as far as the state funding fees. I was so glad that our Tourette's from the DOE reached out to us and said, we need to talk. And so they, like, gave us, you know, even if this percentage did it, we were in line to lose a lot, and going next year. My understanding is that the amount you're going to get for free and reduced student is going to even go up more from the state. The problem here is you've got the feds versus the state, right? And because of the way we fund, if you take advantage of this, you hurt yourself over here. So it, it kind of sticks.
So the free lunch thing was a federal?
That's a federal, yes.
Okay, that's.
Yes, and the state adequacy on the amount that you get for free and reduced students is a state funding through the F. So, didn't even have line of sight to that, and I apologize for that.
Right, well, that's good, because we found out.
Yeah, I know now. But it's not that the opportunity may not present itself, but in New Hampshire finds a different way to do their funding and not predicate that on the free and reduced students specifically. If we can ramp it up this year and really get people used to doing it.
Well, and I feel like.
We've been trying really hard.
If we let families know that we could be providing free lunch for everyone, especially with the economy the way it is right now, like people are hurting. And nobody is qualifying for help, so I think if they knew that was an opportunity, but we still need to get the applications.
One of the things that we did do this last year, Kayla, is because, and, and the numbers for this year, the amount that you earn, I mean. I believe people's incomes went up a lot higher than what the, the amount for free and or reduced levels are, just looking to up very. However, the SNAP program has a much higher threshold, you could earn a lot more, so what we were working on this last year, because that took place last year, was to say, okay. You've just barely missed this, like, please apply to through SNAP, because once you apply to SNAP, then you aren't categorically free, which means that's a direct cert. You didn't have, you know, you don't, even if you failed your application, you qualified under state program. So, we've been trying to push that, I want to push that even more this year, since, you know, the amount just didn't go up a lot, but where that SNAP one is, is keeping more in line with what, what truly is the picture right of for.
So they take into consideration the SNAP numbers for us?
Yeah, because what's happened is, we have, we have several families that qualify through SNAP, they qualify through TANF, TANF is a temporary need funding. You have homeless, you have, trying to think the different, there's like all these different categories, somebody can qualify. And SNAP is one of the bigger ones, and so when you apply and you are accepted through SNAP, you're automatically free student, whether you qualify through the application or not. So, the kind of first step is, we need you to file that application so that we can then say, hey, you're, you would qualify under SNAP, you know, please do that, so. But it's getting those applications, and I mean, we're trying to put them out everywhere, we can, right? So, we're going to continue to do that, and hopefully, and this isn't just us, because having just, as you know, come from Milford and other places, and they were actually going to do a exploratory. The business administrators, because we were all in the same boat of, nobody wants to file an application anymore.
Well, and with the amounts.
Title one, it's hurting IDAP, it's hurting your adequacy, it's hurting everything, so.
Those amounts are pretty low, so I think a lot of people just don't even bother, because.
That's why SNAP, because it's a higher threshold. I should probably get that threshold so we can kind of publish that.
Yeah, I was going to say, we should really broadcast that, I think, because I think that might encourage a lot more people.
Yep.
Jane, is there any statute against incentivizing filling out of those forms? Like, if we were to say to kids, you know, your name, if you fill it in, your name's going to go in the hat, and we draw five names for a gift card or something?
I don't know of anything against that, but I wouldn't do it till I know, but I honestly don't know of anything. In fact, I think I may have heard other districts. I'm not big on that, because when we all need as, as a group of BAs, we're all, you know, kind of freebieing, trying to say, okay, what's, what are you doing, what are you doing, what are you doing to see what, what works up there? So, but I, I can find out, in fact, I have a meeting with southwestern BAs Monday and just see if anyone there is. Because that's this region, that's, you know, that's not the Lakes region, that's not the coast, that's this region here. So it's more like, like, business administrators.
Yeah, for like open house, that would be a good idea, get families, go gift card for, I guess.
Any other questions?
I don't know, I think Karen Thompson's really good at getting people to fill out surveys. Maybe we should set her up on open, what is it, the, the open night there at the elementary school? Karen over there passing out her five-dollar gift cards to Duncan.
You gotta do what you gotta do, right? You've got to get those surveys.
I thought you did an amazing job, and I, and I, I feel like we should prove you. I thought you did an amazing job, and I, and I, I feel like we should prove you to, obviously we'll give you a nice chair to sit there. And you could be right there explaining why we need them to just fill out the application, whether or not they believe that they will qualify.
Hey, as long, as long as you can get me a nice chair, Kendra, I'm happy to help.
Done, done, Karen, done.
Check. I had a question on E-rate funding, cause I don't know what it is, and I saw that we had a more explanatory little flyer.
You will have more information from Justin, he's kind of capturing that. My piece of it is to say, Justin's gonna be doing this, but as part of this, I want him to sign a contract with a company that does all the filing for us. They do the four seventies and the four seventy ones, and they, they literally will kind of tap you and say, hey, the window's open, it's time to do this. I don't know all of those, and to put all those other deadlines in this brain. And they're pretty comprehensive, and I will tell you, um, in previous district, having done this, um, we, we got tapped just during and right after COVID, about getting, um, Chromebooks, we got a hundred and twelve thousand dollars of Chromebooks. Um, one year and eighty something thousand just before I left. That was all because using these companies that know where the money is and where, so. My part of it is asking you to allow me to contract with a company that does that. Everything else is different.
Do we have a cost on that?
Yeah, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Oh, then that sounds like a no brainer.
And it's a company, in this case, the one I would like to go with, I talked with Dr. Ryan about it, is one that I have dealt with before. Um, had very, very good success with, at least, you know, the one person that I, I speak with, and if she goes, well, then I'm gonna think about it again, but she, they, awesome, just awesome. So I, I can't say enough about having dealt with them for over five years.
I'd like to know more about what it is, cause I don't know what it is, and then when we get to Justin's, we'll make, I figure we can do that, if that's okay with everybody? You did want us to make a motion to retain fifty thousand dollars from the fund balance?
Yes, so as you know, we voted in the spring, um, to allow us to retain a fund balance. Um, and I mean, we can, we could retain quite a bit. Um, I have not gotten that number from the state, but I, I do get a, um, a calculator from Mark, uh, Meganell at the state. And he kind of sent us a calculators, we could hold quite a bit. Um, I don't feel the need for that, but fifty thousand dollars would kind of, I think, make us feel a little, with me, anyway, cause as you know, there's no hiding of employees, you saw everything. Nothing, there's eighty-three percent of your budget right there.
Right.
Um, so if anything changes in the insurance or anything else, it's kind of like opening roll, but I was going. It just, it all depends who, what, where. So I would ask that we could, um, retain fifty thousand. The reason I'm asking now is because I filed the DOE twenty-five, um, by September first. I'll be letting you know to come in to sign the cover pages for that. Um, and when I file that, I have to, um, if the board so chooses, I would hold those funds um, as reserved for other purposes, and the state is, will be notified, they'll know based on where I'm placing that, that we have taken that. Because when the, um, Department of Revenue calls me, um, to do our tax thing, they'll go, okay, Jay, you have the ability to do this, did you vote? Yep, yeah, we already knows it, so the DRA will, will, um, take it over from there and adjust our taxes appropriately if we so vote to do that.
So did anybody have any questions about that, to Haley?
If it is. Back to the taxpayers.
Right. Next year.
Sorry, Wayne.
Yep, no, so when you say we voted on it in the spring, do you mean we voted on it in town meeting?
Yeah, to, uh, repay, yep.
Shouldn't that start on the budget that that year was being voted on and not on the budget that was voted on before that article was put in? Because the budget we're talking about now would be that, at the end of this year, we can retain what they gave us permission to, not the, not the budget that we were working on at the time of the vote.
No, we can do it based on this year, now that the vote has gone into place of the current year's budget. We would withhold, um, the fifty thousand from going back to the taxpayers, um, for the October, November setting of the tax rate. So it took place, you know, as of the first of January, it would officially have taken place that we can now withhold it.
I see what he's saying. Took me a minute to get there, sorry.
Our, our taxpayers didn't give us permission to retain money until this current budget that we're in now.
Right, and that would be this budget. So what happens, Wayne, is it would be retained for this budget. However, the funding comes from the fact that we will have a surplus from the year we just ended. I'm hoping.
And you'll have that information as of September first?
Oh, I sure hope so, or you guys can, you know. I'm sure the state will be.
At the last meeting, um, the, and I know that we had the rest of June and obviously the pay through the summer, but there's a million, one million forty-two thousand dollars left in the budget. So I, I would hope that we do have enough to, to retain, but I would really like to look at the fine print on, on that and understand that our taxpayers are did in fact give us permission to retain money from the budget that we were working when the article was written, written.
Yep. The other thing, Wayne, is I'm, I'm kind of confused by your number of what's left over, cause I'm only seeing two or three hundred thousand. I mean, I was still paying bills from.
There was the meeting that you weren't here for.
Oh, okay, all right.
June fourteenth, one million forty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine, I think the number was. So, I mean, and I asked in the meeting, is this what's left at this point?
Yeah, no, you don't have that now, trust me. Like I said last week, I was still paying four months of bills that I had just gotten.
No, and I understand, I knew we didn't have that, I knew, and, and Dr. Ryan made it very clear that, you know, we had to finish up. It takes a little bit to get everything finished up, wrapped up at the end of the year. I, I completely understand that, I'm just. Come on, make sure we're done, our eyes are crossed and our teeth, cause we can't get equipment that's voted on in March until July first. So why do we have permission to save money that was allocated, um, the previous year for, uh, to, I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing. I felt like that article starts ne- at the end of this year, at the end of this coming year.
It's very similar to, you voted to withhold twenty-five thousand, um, for the special and expendable trust and twenty-five thousand for the maintenance expendable trust. Those both come out of the, the year we just closed, those just come out of that year's um, any excess fund balance, so it's working in that same vein, it's the same pot of money that we're looking at. So it, it takes that July first, like I can't pay anything until I even know we have a surplus to, you know, to the town, the town holds those funds for us. So I can't pay either of those twenty-five thousand until I know I have a surplus. So once I know I have that, that gets paid out this current year, however, it is from the year we just ended. So if you kind of look at it for an article, it tells you from the, I believe it even written in there, the year so ended um, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, or whatever. Uh, so it works.
So what you're saying. Sorry. So what you're saying is the number we got was the one million forty-two thousand or whatever. Is not, is not there now, that, we're down to two, three hundred thousand.
Because remember, we're just, I mean, I just finished July and I'm still getting bills from March.
Okay.
Which I am making the adjustment.
Right.
Yeah, so, in fact, I had one tonight, I was signing this May, I'm like, I'm sorry.
Get your bills in. All right. So, we need the motion, did we do the motion already? We had a discussion. I don't think we haven't done a motion. So I need a, a motion to retain fifty thousand dollars from the fund balance. To go into, what is the fund called?
It is, um, to, um, withhold for the up to five percent of net assessed, um, value to, um, retain for the year.
Retain for the year. And if it's not spent at the end of this year, it goes back to the taxpayers.
And to spend any of it, we have to have a public hearing, right? Okay, so it's not like, oh, we're only spending.
Without you guys say so.
Madam Chair, can I just read the article?
Yes.
Just want to make sure everyone hears this, just, cause this really clarifies it, Wayne. Article eight, fund balance retention. To see if the school district will vote to authorize indefinitely until rescinded to retain year-end unassigned general funds in an amount not to exceed in any fiscal year, five percent of the current fiscal year's net assessment. So this was in FY twenty-four, in accordance with our say one ninety-eight, four B two. So if, if, the language specifically states in the current fiscal year's net assessment, which in March twenty twenty-four is FY twenty-four, the budget we were currently expending from. Okay, so it, it is in the article and that is what, kind of what people voted on, just so that everyone has that.
And I did receive communication from the Department of Ed with just a preliminary calculator number for me, and the reason they sent that is because they know cause this all gets filed with the Department of Ed, that we approved that, so it's already on their books, which is why they reached out to me and said, in sale, here is what, here's the calculator, have fun, so.
And I think this was a secret ballot vote, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
So it was well scrutinized.
I think pretty much all of it, wasn't everything?
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Ryan, I appreciate that explanation.
Thank you, Wayne, I appreciate.
Helpful to me too, so.
So I need a motion for that. Who wants to make that?
Wayne?
I will make the motion.
I need a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved.
Okay.
Yeah, any other questions on that?
I don't.
I have two, two more items, just really quick, one just came out, so I did want to let you know, um, New Hampshire retirement. So the New Hampshire retirement, um, rates that we pay, um, change, or, well, I would take that back. Once a year, they did not, so they stay the same for two years. Um, there was one set during my time that it stayed for four years, it just didn't change. This year, um, for the, um, fiscal year end twenty-six and twenty-seven, which is the budget I am, and our administrators are already working on, um, the change has come in. And the teacher rate has gone from nineteen point six four percent down to nineteen point two three percent. The employee rate has gone from thirteen point five three percent to twelve point seven five percent. And what that translates to, on, with our current staffing in place, would be, it's not a lot, but it's twenty thousand two hundred and twenty-nine, twenty-nine dollars savings in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, just using today's staffing and, and these in place, so. Just figured I'd give you that quick up.
Thank you.
That's one in the right direction.
That is.
Yes.
Wow.
And then, um, the last thing is, and I, I mentioned, put it in the audit report, and I forgot, um, our independent auditors will begin their field work October twenty-first. So that is all scheduled to go to. That's it.
Any questions on that?
Everybody?
All right, thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
I think it's the new packet, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the rest of it.
Okay, let me open that one, it'll take me a second here, sorry.
Volume two or three?
Right. Okay. Director of Academics and Career Readiness Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, um, thank you for allowing me to attend from home, can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great. Um, so you have my report, um, I do want to also, um, remind the board that in historically, we have always asked a board member or two or three or however many to attend, um, our opening day orientation for our new staff. Um, just for breakfast, to say a few words and to meet the new, this, the new staff. Um, so, um, if anybody would like to be there that morning, we will be having a, a small breakfast at eight-thirty next Wednesday morning. So, um, feel free to attend. If you choose to come and would like to have some time on the agenda, please let me know, so I can schedule that in. Um, I always think it's nice to have a board member there, I just think that makes, that demonstrates to the district our, our, you know, collective, uh, commitment to, to our new staff. So if anybody would like to be there, please let me know.
I would plan on being there, but if anybody else would like to go too, that's. That'd be good.
Eight-thirty, I'll be there.
So, April, you'll be attending, and Mark, you also?
Eight-thirty, yes, I should be able to, the dump don't open up until twelve, so.
Kendra, am I working next Wednesday?
Yeah, wait, that's Wednesday, the twenty.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Yeah, yes, Kayla, you are, cause that's Parker's move-in day.
Yep, okay, that's what I thought. So I can.
And I cannot as well, even though I wanted to.
I'll try to squeeze out of work, when, when I get back. On, I'll try to squeeze out, make it up as well.
Great, okay, so there'll be breakfast there for you, and there'll be some introductions, and you can all, um, introduce yourself, and if you have something, what words of wisdom you'd like to offer to them, feel free to do so. And you have my reports, and any questions that you have, feel free to, I'm here to answer.
It is in this room, right?
It is in that room, yes.
All right. I just want to say, I love the goals for the grant this year.
Yes, we are excited and, um, hopeful that there's some, there's a little bit of hope that I got in the last week or so, that the grant might continue. I, I don't want to put any false hope out there, but I, I feel like there's some, they've been very impressed with the K through, pre-K through twelve work that we've been doing with the money. Um, with, like, I think I've mentioned, we're the only school that has used the grant to touch the entire district, all the kids in our district, and so they're interested in that. And so we're hoping that that might have a little in for us to continue the grant for at least maybe, maybe two more years, but we're waiting to see, so.
That'd be nice.
Justin, we have someone in our waiting room.
So the teachers that are in the alt program, um, we have we have two that are just starting and two that are in their third year, you said, are they on track?
Yep, they're on track to finish their SO, to complete their, um, progress at the end of this year, yes.
Okay, do they get three or four years to complete that generally?
They get three, they get three years.
Three years. Perfect. And the Gallup poll was interesting to read.
Feedback, we'll be, as I mentioned, we'll be using that data in a lot of different ways, I think even part of our strategic planning, we'll be using it for that. Uh, we'll be using it in our work bravely, we'll be using it, um, in our development of our portfolio of learner, um, definitions, um, there's a lot to unpack in that. Uh, and it lines up very closely with some of the, um, information we got from our, um, surveys from our portfolio of learner work. So, um, yeah, I mean, it wasn't as, as nice as we had hoped, but I think we made a little progress from last year. And Gallup will continue to work with us for the next two years, um, to help us track where, uh, how we're moving through that. And if we're, if we're improving or not.
Yeah, that's good information, for sure. Any questions for Karen? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So principals report. We have Anna's first.
I guess I have to go back to school so I have more letters after my name. Um, good evening, so you have my report, I would welcome your questions. The one thing I want to make sure I touch on is, um, the credit recovery process that, um, took place this summer under the direction of Mr. Ponce. Um, so eighteen students were offered that opportunity, and some of them did not, um, decide to participate, but, um, we were reviewing their progress again today and looking at several students who have already earned the credits that they were looking towards. Um, and a few students who are really close, he's been having them come in regularly to meet with him, to kind of talk about their progress and their timing and answer any questions that they have. Um, and we've just tried to be flexible with students, understanding that they are taking on this additional time to try to get themselves caught up or ahead, um, and. Um, and so really working with them. To find something that works and that's amenable to them while also moving them forward, so very grateful to Chris and his work on this. Um, and excited that we'll have some kids who will be advancing a grade that they otherwise wouldn't have if they hadn't done the credit recovery. Um, so that's, that's really encouraging, and then I will update, um, I had as a vacancy, the school counselor, um. Part-time position, but we did just fill that, um, Barbara Geis. Uh, was a longtime counselor at Manana, she just retired. And I guess she wants to keep busy, so she's gonna do two days here with us, um, Joe Smith actually recruited her. Um, knew her and has worked with her in the past, and so reached out to her and she was interested, so. She came today to tour and we're really excited to have her on board, we think the two of them are gonna work really well together, I agree. Um, to help support our kids, and then, um, library media specialist, we have something in the works, so I'm hopeful. Um, but if if it doesn't pan out, we do have long-term stuff lined up, so we'll be able to open our library. Um, and then we've still need a lot of career professionals. Um, I will entertain your questions.
Did you, uh, feel like the online credit recovery, um, was good, because it was the first year of doing that?
Yeah, yes, I think what. It really worked for our kids because they didn't have to be here, um, because sometimes that in itself presents a hardship for them, if they work, if their parents work, just, just to get here. On a regular basis, my understanding of what's been done in the past. Compared to this is that the ed mentum was a lot more in-depth and a lot more engaging for them and provided them with a lot more structure, even though they were at home doing it on their own. Um, we had. Some students who only had a few units or assignments that they had to do, because it was all based on what their teachers let. Chris know what they didn't master, and that's what they had to do on the online over there, so it was very individualized, yeah, and tailored to each kid, so. I think the system really worked, I would love to keep doing that, um, I could see us using it as, um, you know, an intervention tool throughout the year. Something to consider, but definitely to continue using it for credit recovery, I think would be a good idea.
Great, thank you.
I could just add on, um, when we had written into the grant, we'd written into a stipend for a teacher who wanted to. Be a monitor, like a coach through the course of the summer, we we didn't have any takers. Um, but we, and so, uh, when we wrote that activity and you have to include. What is your percentage, like, what's your success rate, what do you anticipate, what's your goal? And, uh, you know, we had written, I don't know, eighty percent, we're like, oh, that's pretty.
It's enthusiastic.
Yeah. Uh, and, you know, realistically, because it was our first year and knowing our students, we thought perhaps even a fifty percent success rate would be great. We are creeping up to eighty percent almost.
Nice.
Uh, unbelievable, and the difference for students. Who, there's one student, I think, who earned three credits, um, and hammered it right out and really stuck with it.
Wow.
The difference is now they've worked through something that was hard.
Mm-hmm.
Um, recognize that they're getting rewarded for it on the other side, there's a whole different feeling now, I I was one of those kids in in school. There's a whole different feeling of confidence that they. Look at it like, well, now I can just do this, like, I know I can do it, I I'm not gonna ever be in this position again, because I had a positive thing. Happened to be a tool for doing what it was that I was supposed to do.
Right.
And I should have done in the first place.
Yes.
And I think a number of students actually said that to Mr. Ponce, is I should have just done this in the first place, I should have done it right. And I want to make sure and and echo, uh, and, um, thanks to Chris, he really took this. Soup to nuts, he investigated, he went out and got the training. Uh, he reached out to Keen, he sat with him and learned about it, he dove into the software, he tracked students. He really contacted students individually, he had them, he did a lot of work on how, so, just an acknowledgement of how hard he did work on that.
Yeah, thanks.
Gosh, I really, and they're not having to redo what they already mastered, is amazing, because that's like when you have to redo a whole class and it's like.
Yeah, that.
Really, I know some of this isn't so boring, so I think that really kind of takes away some of the, yeah.
And from a cost perspective, uh, the school had budgeted seven thousand for not knowing necessarily what the, the cost was gonna be, and I think it was.
We budgeted seven.
Yeah, I think we only spent twelve hundred dollars.
Wow.
Wow.
Fascinating.
And we have forty licenses.
Hmm, right.
So it's thirty, thirty hours.
Nice.
And at a year long, so for the intervention work that that the end is starting. Well, some students who need a little bit longer to do some of their summer recovery, they're gonna continue to act that way.
Good, that was my next question, was if it just ends August seventeenth, or can they, if they're almost there, can they still continue it or?
Yeah, so that date really has to do with, uh, eligibility for fall sports, so I think. We could look at if a student's not planning to play a sport and who want, they are interested in finishing, then we can support that.
I see, great. All right. So, anybody else, any questions for Anna, by the way, welcome to your first school board, official school board meeting, both of you. All right, thank you, Anna. I like seeing them open enrollment, too, that was nice. All right, so, Dr. Brennan?
Madam Chair, members of the committee, you have my report, um, I'll highlight some pieces, some pieces we'll circle back to when we go through handbooks later. Um, so it's been so wonderful to talk with so many people, um, I've been in the library and the historical society and meeting those folks, because we hope to. Get kids back in those locations and and all of the teachers and parents that have been reaching out. And many students, because I'm going to give you even hotter off the press enrollment numbers. Um, and then what were, than what was included as as of last Wednesday. Um, just in order of my report, some things that I did want to highlight, um. We, uh, we really want to focus on attendance as an area to partner with the community on and understand. What are some barriers to, um, to attending school, uh, regularly? Um, in in looking at data, um, we did have seventy one students with more than ten days out last year. It may have been excused that, uh, this was a a combination of everything, um, so I'm I'm not saying that we had seventy one truant students, it's not what I'm saying. Um, but, but a significant number that we really just want to check in on, so you'll see, um. An updated, uh, procedure of supports, um, for attendance in our handbook, um, and that was developed with input, um, from a a few stakeholders in the building as well. Um, to safety, like Dr. Ryan was talking about, um, we're making a shift, um, around, uh, student safety at arrival and dismissal. Um, and so we are, uh, having it be, it sounds almost not safe, but a rolling. Uh, arrival and dismissal, so, um, folks aren't parking their cars and having kids moving while their line of traffic's moving. Um, and so that has been, um, it was shared ahead, uh, in my last, um, in my parent, um. Newsletter this past week, um, and they knew that that would be, um, brought up today, so that's, um, in the handbook, so, uh, having folks. Uh, arrive in this missing spot, going around the building, um, to to sort of behind the gym cafeteria area, um. And, uh, we'll have staff, uh, in all those spots, um, disembarking and embarking, uh, from there and going where they need to go. Um, so hopefully that is helpful, um, but like any change, we'll see how it goes.
Right, yeah.
And we'll communicate that, um. Also, I, we, Mr. Ponce and I were, um, tasked with, uh, updating the emergency operations procedural manual, um, uh, which is something that. Uh. The principal of the elementary school and and assistant principal, um, of the middle high school do every summer, and so we went through it, the fine-tuned film, and we made sure things were. Um, it was just really great for me to go through in such detail, so I am well aware of what all of our procedures will be. Um, so the next stage is, um, he was, uh, uh, shining up a couple, a couple more things on the middle high school, um, one, and then that'll go to our other partners, which include. Um, the chief of police and fire and the op, front office staff, um, for their review, and then that needs to be submitted, um, for October.
By October fifteenth.
Yeah, correct. Um, so we, we were, we separately worked for quite some time and then we locked in for eight hours in the conference room and went through every single thing, so. Um, hoping to, uh, to just have a really solid, um, procedural manual for this next stage of inviting our other partners in the southwest corner.
Hmm.
Um. We had a, a wide variety of kids, I receiving special ed services over at the elementary school for summer, um, so it's lovely to meet lots of kids, um, already, which was, um, really helpful. Um. We, let's see, there was a, some pieces here I wanted to go through, um. Uh, it's been so nice to connect with the Keen Southwest, um, educational leadership, um, group, um, and so, uh. Uh, myself and Patty Wallace and Chris Ponce, um, went, uh, to Keen State for a whole day, but, um. But just really getting involved in Keen State and making that connection will benefit us. Um, we had some folks do various, um, professional development, including. Ms. Foster joining us all day yesterday in this room, uh, for MTSSR, and we had a state rep, so this is the tier reading, um, support process.
Yeah.
Um, and so we had a wonderful day here yesterday with, um, teachers from all, almost all grade levels, we had a a pretty good representation, which was wonderful. Um. Our open house will be on the twenty seventh, just before their sixth grade, uh, well, orientation, so instead of the night before, which historically has been. Kind of let everybody to get as good a night's sleep as any of us can in anticipation of the first day back, so it'll be the, the second day before, um, from five to six. Staffing.
Hmm.
Uh, so just for your, uh, hot off the press, um, enrollment numbers. Changes to what you see here, there's actually forty four kindergarters now, um, thirty three in first. Thirty seven in second, and fifth grade has gone up to forty three, and we do have two pending, which may end up in fifth grade. Um, so, um, fifth grades real big. Um, but, uh, in two sections, so with all of that said, we have. Received, um, a submission of resignation from our, for, one of our first grade teachers. Uh, that was in three sections, but with thirty three students. Um. The, uh, we also have recently received a resignation of second grade teacher. Um, so the district fought long and hard about a lot of different things, um, and, uh. Our recommendation is to replace the second grade position, we, we create that second, uh, section. Um, and at this time, due to enrollment, not replace the first grade position. But we wanted the board to be very aware that we have a very large, uh, large for us, fifth grade. Um. Just so we can have all the numbers as part of our decision.
Do we, we max out at twenty five, right?
So state standard, our standards, we're there. State standards is thirty.
Oh, I thought it was twenty five.
Yeah, K two, uh, K to two is twenty five.
Okay, that's why I thought that.
Three to above is thirty, unless it's a lab class, and then it's twenty four. But, um, potential of forty five students split between two classes would be a problem. I was gonna wear it too, yeah, so I love hot off the presses.
That one's real, uh, we, it, um. Yeah, but that's.
So you said two more have enrolled?
Uh, we have one more enrolled since this, so we're definitely at forty three.
Two pending.
And then two more are pending, okay. Yeah, forty five is a lot, and two is less.
Yeah, so, and I was looking at this even before the updated numbers. So. So this is just my philosophy anyway, or my thought process, there's forty four and fourth, right, there's forty, well, as a, a report, there was forty two and fifth. Fifth is like the transitional year from elementary school to middle school, so in my head, I feel like fifth should have three. And fourth should have two, but I don't know what the student population is like in either of those grades or whatever, so, you know, I'm obviously leaving that up to you guys, but. We've always talked about having three fifth grade classes for years, we've been talking about it, and. With the thought process of that is the year, they need to be prepared to go over to middle school, there's a lot going on in fifth grade, you know, and having larger classes. And my, and for me anyway, for the teachers is hard, I would think, you know, so.
A lot of kids in one room.
It's a lot of kids in one room, and so then I'm also curious about how many I E Ps are in fifth grade versus fourth and all that stuff, so. You know, get downing and get, get, getting down into it, so. So that is my concern with the bigger classes, especially in fifth grade, for the fifth grade kids. Um, because I want them to have what they need in order to come over to the middle school, prepared and ready and, you know. Feeling good about it, you know, kind of thing, so. I'm just gonna put that out there.
Well, and now especially that it has.
Now that they might have more.
More than fourth grade and then to still be at only two.
I mean, I know now's not the time to be switching up classes and stuff either, too, but, you know.
Um, the. Facilities is aware that decisions are being made tonight.
Hmm.
Um, first grade and fifth grade are aware that decisions are being made tonight.
Hmm.
Um, so, um, so we have contingencies, we have plans upon plans. Because it is late, and so we have. We, we know all the paths we could take and what needs to happen at eight o'clock tomorrow morning.
Hmm.
Um, the, um, the, the other piece, um, you know, and and Jane may want to, um, add. And to what extent we can have this in, um, in public session, but, um, there have been, uh, there is a, a. Student need that came after the budget was done, that, um, is impacting another line. And he's, that, they're all our students, whether they're, um, here or not, so, uh, that's another, uh, piece of that initial recommendation to not replace that first grade. Um. But as that recommendation was made, uh, last week. I think, um, last week we had gotten, I had forty two by Wednesday, but I think the Friday before we had thirty nine. We have, yeah, it it has ballooned.
I see.
Um, so.
One of the things I like to see is a forty three pupil kindergarten. That's a new bubble, and then I'd love to replicate that, sorry, forty four.
Forty four?
I cannot sit here and say that we should still not fill a position, I wouldn't fill the grade one, but I would have a third grade five. I'm just gonna lay that out there, um, because at, at thirty nine, it was very reasonable. Um, and and I say very reasonable loosely, because I'm not a fifth grade teacher, I know one is in the world, so. But at four, potentially forty five. Um. I, 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 I'm concerned, I'm not as much concerned about the fifth grade transition piece. As much as I am about the learning loss that's taken place over the last four years and how they're trying to work their way back, and at fifth grade. Our goal is to try and prepare them as strongly as we can. Four, six through twelve, and recoup whatever it is, that's, you know, some of whatever it is that was lost.
I mean, that's kind of what I was meaning, yeah.
So, I, I would, I would. I would rather we have a conversation about replacing fifth grade advertisements as quickly as we can. You know, no sooner was the grade two resignation announced than we had an applicant who's being interviewed tomorrow.
Oh, good.
Good.
That's good.
And I also can't not say. That I'm hopeful the board would reconsider its practice of accepting resignations after June fifteenth. Without my having the opportunity to talk with the superintendent of the receiving. District. And have the leaving employee remain on contract until a suitable replacement is found. Because what's happening, we're losing a second grade teacher to Marwell.
Hmm.
And I've not heard from the superintendent of that S U, which I'm. Curious about. But it would just be a friendly conversation, because I would then say, well, we need to hold this teacher in the position until a suitable replacement is found. Um, so hopefully as we move through this summer and into next year, that maybe the board, we can have that conversation. Because we're, we're training teachers and losing them to higher paying districts, and they're leaving us in July and August.
Yeah, in August.
Yes, it is.
Trouble, probably, probably some troublesome, yes.
Yeah, I'm very happy that they're moving on to, to bigger jobs, but, um.
Yeah.
I, I don't necessarily want to do that. I, I don't necessarily want to do that.
It's worth the conversation.
Other, other pieces just for, for thought. I've also considered other ways we can support the, the now, what would be the now larger, larger-ish. First grade, still, you know, still, you know, in the sixteen, seventeen. And then, and also fifth grade with. But, but some of those are things that we don't have, so we have open pair positions for our gen ed positions. And we, we have two general education pair professionals in the budget. That are not, they're currently assigned into special education roles because that's not there. So that would be another, that would, I would planfully allocate them. They're not with us yet. Another piece that, and, and we also have talked about. Components of our E L A curriculum, in my view, that have online learning components as well. We have certain number of licenses that we'd make sure that we allocate that to the upper grades that are bigger. So we have, we have plans upon plans. But we wanted to give that data. Before I head on from this section with any other questions.
I think I have some stuff that I don't know if I should wait, are we gonna do the handbooks?
So actually, that's kind of the end of mine. I just need to know what I'm doing moving forward.
So do we want to talk about staffing or should I ask questions or?
Why don't you, why don't you ask any questions you may have? And then we can come back to the staffing, I love that.
So I guess I have a concern more than a question about the rolling dismissal idea. I've seen them in other districts and it's typically a nightmare. You wait for a long time, things are held up, especially with younger children. And from like the teacher aspect, I feel like you're losing a lot. Because you see families, you see, especially the younger grades, because you're there releasing each student. And I feel like for the parents, they are also out there talking and mangling. So I feel like we're losing some of the community aspect of pickup. And like Mr. Vecto knows all three hundred kids and all of their family tree. Has anybody who picks them up and I think it's just. Upsetting to see, I feel like it wasn't broken. So I just, I'm not sure why, I guess I'm wondering why we're switching.
Sure, so in talking with various stakeholders that do, do dismissal, including for office staff and P A S program. That there were a number of close calls with kiddos almost being hit in the parking lot. So, close enough that it was noticeable, not that anybody, like, like a screeching giant scary thing. But enough that people on looking were, you know. And. There, we have a kind of a funny setup, like there's not, there's not a second egress. That's like, like you can't, you can't loop. And so no matter what we're doing back. I'm, I'm definitely open to any alternatives. A piece that we talked about was, well, you know, folks are gonna park, they park on the, the one by the field. Not in the back. But that, I've been told this whole. So, and I know that I, the historical context, there used to be a rolling drop off. But it was a long school street and then it would back up onto one nineteen. So going back to that wasn't an option either. No solution is gonna be perfect and, and we need, I think we need to see how this goes. I, it would break me if somebody got hit or bumped or just at a scary moment in the parking lot. So that, that was a big piece of that.
I kind of side with Kayla here in where I feel like we've done a lot of different things over the years. To try to. Alter our pickup for the sake of safety. Or time efficiency and I feel like this has been what's worked best over the years. And like I do agree with Kayla and where when you. Come out there at the end of the day, there, there is so much community right there. Where parents are chatting, where you'll see faculty members out there bringing their kiddos. Giving them an opportunity to chat with the parent, check in with the parent. Or even just check in with a former student who's picking up their sibling, who they know has had a really difficult life or hard time. Or who's had a great achievement just happened and that faculty member is getting their only opportunity to congratulate them, talk to them, check in with them. See them. I feel like the pickup moves actually, it moves actually really nice. And by like week three, I feel like the kids have got their groove on and they're going and they're moving, so. I don't know, I, I kind of like the. The, like Kayla said, the community base of our pickup. But. I don't know if my opinion really matters that much, but I'm, I, I do agree with Kayla on the pickup piece. I, it would be sad to not see the faculty be able to come out and have forty seconds, a minute, two minutes. To, to catch up with a former parent, kid, or to just check in due to the day, so. There's been a lot of different trials and errors and this one seems to have worked the best.
So in my opinion, I get the, I, yeah, the community thing. I, is nice to have when you're picking up your kids and whatnot, but also did you see the safety part of it? So, I mean, I think it's worth trying and if it doesn't work, you know, it doesn't work, you know.
And, and what I'm hearing from the concerns is also to make sure that we have those venues, to have those, those moments. And to make sure that we're having good communication and regular communication between parents and, and family and, and the teachers. So we, you know, we will have monthly community meetings during the day. That, that parents, family members, friends, neighbors will be able to come to. And then the staff will be doing weekly communication in a different way than had been done before. And so, but I, I definitely am hearing that want of community opportunities and more communication. And I'm wondering if we can address that in a, in a different way while keeping safety.
Any other question, Kayla?
I, the rest of mine are more about policy stuff.
Um, so back to staffing. Does the board need to make a decision about whether or not we fill a position or is that your due decision?
That's our decision. And I really, I'm strongly suggesting we fill the grade one position for most of grade five, so advertise for grade five.
Would be my suggestion, but.
And then it would be that acceptance of those resignations.
I would, and typically non-public. But, but yes. And I know that, you know, the cost savings is always helpful to us. Where we don't fill a position, but the education of students obviously are always that. We all are in agreement and can understand that. Forty-five, grade five students spread between two classrooms, not what we're, not the direction we want to move in. We can also use.
Can I say something? Dr. Ryan, I understand what you're saying and I know it's your decision, but it's forty-two in fifth grade, forty-four in fourth grade. And then all of a sudden it drops to thirty, thirty-six, thirty-four, what do we do with that situation if thousands enrollment numbers stay the same? And we have three, three grades with ten kids per class.
Wait, for, for me. It's always data driven, these kind of decisions, so for instance, kindergarten's at forty-four. If that stays the same or increases and heads to first grade, first grade will have three sections. And we'll have to see what the kindergarten numbers are behind it. So we, we have to really think about, you know, it seems like our classes with three sections. Particularly if we're adding the fifth grade, it's those classes with more than forty, forty-two kids. That's where we're really looking to have three sections and making that decision hopefully in spring and not in August. But it has been wonderful to see so many new kids. I mean, these were the numbers from Wednesday, if we, if I look back at the numbers from the summer, I mean, we've had. You know, upper teens, number of new learners join us, so it's great, it's wonderful, it's what we wanna do. So, but we have to try to make those decisions in the spring as best we can. And, and then plan for, you know, there, there's going to be a little bit of unknown. But, you know, trying to hound as many points of data as we can. And, you know, really talking with our, our, our pre-K folks and the daycares nearby. And any census data we can, we can gather to see as best we can, what's coming in for kindergarten. And how many are out there in other grades that may be choosing to join us. I think some of this, and, and I, I could find the exact numbers. But meeting a lot of these families that have come in to do enrollment is a lot of folks coming back from homeschooling. So we are seeing that, that shift back post-COVID still happening.
And I would be more hesitant if we were adding another teacher, but we're, we're just replacing. We're keeping staff numbers the same, so I think that makes sense to do. And I feel like every year there's some shifting that typically has to happen, especially in those middle grade, middle and upper. Well, never for you really, Donna, but.
And if we ever got into a situation where we were heavy one teacher based on our enrollment, because it is all going to be enrollment driven. I would make the request to the board to have a reduction in force. Because, you know, we are, we have a very tight budget, as you know, and we have to rely on our student enrollment. Our goal is to increase our student enrollment, but. Then, you know, that would be the last, you know, tool in the toolbox to make sure that we stay right sized.
We don't need to vote on it. Um, the, I'm wondering, because technology is next, sorry, I don't know if I'm jumping ahead, but with the new. Did you have something, Kendra?
Well, I'm just confused, so do we vote, are we voting on whether or not to replace the teacher? Or that decision is up to the, the superintendent?
It's up to them, yeah. We gave our recommendation for it, but there's no vote.
And, and what, and what was the recommendation, was it a consensus? Cause I guess I missed it. Right, I, your consensus was that it was a yes on the hiring, correct? And Kayla's and then, and then what was Mark's?
I didn't think we had to have a, I thought.
Something to say, Kendra?
Well, I guess I was just confused because April said that we gave our consensus, but I didn't, I didn't hear Mark's and I didn't say anything. So I was, I'm just trying to check in.
Maybe consensus was the wrong word. Do you have, do you have something you want to say about it?
No, I'm tossed, I don't know, I'm, obviously I don't want to make it harder for the teachers. But I also kind of feel like every time we have an opportunity to save money or bring our budget down. We're like, we're not gonna take it, I, it's, but I, but then I'm also on that other end of like, okay. I can see where it would make it easier, I can see where it would provide a better opportunity. For less behavioral issues in the classroom. But I, but then I kind of look at it and, and as like a soccer game and where. By the time the ball has reached the goalie. It's surpassed many, many players. And so when we're getting these kids up to fifth grade. The older kids, their behavior should be a little wrangled in better to where we. Behavior issue should be tied down at that point where, to the most part. Where they know how to behave, they know what's expected of them in that building and so it's just kind of, I don't know, it's hard. I, I'm guessing we're gonna hire the teacher and I'm okay with either not hiring or hiring, I'm just. It's, to me, it's frustrating and where every single time we have an opportunity to help our community. With a tax relief here a little bit and get our budget down, we find a reason to not let our budget go down, that's all. It's, I don't think any of us win, is all I'm saying.
Anybody else, did you have anything to say, Mark, about it? Alright, so we're ready to move on? I am wondering. If the emails you guys are sending out weekly to, that the board might be able to get on that list, to get them? Cause I know before we were told we couldn't on the old system, so I didn't know if the new system. Well, that's true too.
I also, I, I haven't started mine yet, but it will be posted, embedded on the website, I hope. And it will go out on my Facebook page, so it'll go out like three folders. But I think we can act with the bright arrow so you can get all school emails.
I just added myself, I saw that on there and I was like, oh, I'm gonna do that right now.
Sorry, you just want, like the announcements, newsletters coming from them, you don't want every.
No, I mean, I don't think we need everything, but if we could just get the, like the weekly newsletters that they're sending out, it would be great to have that information. We may not always get, you know, as board members without elementary school kids or, I mean, I have a high school kid, but, you know. Alright, so thank you very much for your reports. The Director of Technology report, Justin.
Yep, I'm sure you have my report, before I jump into E-Rate world, if you have any questions about my report.
Thank you to you and your staff for getting all the computers ready for the school year, I know it's always a big task every summer. That's all I have besides the E-Rate stuff. Yeah, I know. Alright, go ahead, Justin.
So E-Rate is a reimbursement program through the S C C for certain qualified items. Many of which we already have and we're already doing, so it's basically just gonna become a revenue stream. For us to offset the cost of what we're already purchasing, so the, the main thing that we're, was being hooked at. So you heard the twenty-five hundred dollar a year cost for at least one company and if that's one we go with, that's what that costs it. But we're looking at, on our internet provider, which is Comcast for our fiber internet. Seventy percent reimbursement, which comes out to like sixty-five hundred dollars or so a year. So, or that's what we end up getting in revenue, it's really like, like nine thousand dollars. In reimbursement, but twenty-five hundred dollars off of that for the consultant, these are sixty-five hundred, just on that side. I provided the list here, Kendra and Wayne, I'm sorry, I didn't email it to you before the meeting, I can send it to you afterwards. But just, it's a really detailed list of what kind of qualifies for these reimbursements. And there's certain things like infrastructure equipment switches, wireless controllers, firewalls, that type of stuff. We're not currently seeking any of those projects, we use some of the extra money for network upgrade. To support the additional bandwidth needs for remote instruction. For the next three to five years, we probably will be on some of the systems. So if we can start getting this rolling, it's a revenue stream and it'll save us in the future on. So if we can start getting this rolling, uh, it's a revenue stream and it'll save us in the future on big purchases that we have coming up.
So do you need a motion for us to? Because this is new, right? Do you need a motion, motion accepted, or is it already, it's part of the technology budget kind of thing?
I, yeah, I think, because it's revenue and a program, it's existed since, I think, nineteen ninety-five. Um, it's just something that we had to take advantage of in the past, other school districts have. So it, um, it doesn't necessarily need, it doesn't, it doesn't need.
Need a vote, yeah, okay.
It's revenue that we have available to us through reimbursement program, through technology.
Great.
Oh, boy, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Why haven't we been taking advantage of it all this time?
Kind of disappointing also.
We need to take a vote on twenty-five-hundred-dollar expense for the service to do that work for us, correct?
No, that's, I think that's probably what I was asking.
So that would be the motion, that would be the motion that I would recommend the board make, because that's been the contract.
Right, that's, that's the part I was wanting, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, so we need a motion to. How's it wording?
I know, contract.
Contract with the.
E-Rate online.
E-Rate online for.
How many of yours using? That's the way to do it.
Okay.
So there's. I will make that motion.
Yeah.
Second.
I'll, I'll second it.
So, Mark or Kendra? Um, any discussion on it, anybody have any question? Does anybody have any questions, discussion on it? We could vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else for Justin? Right, thank you, Justin.
That's a new record, Madam Chair, an hour and a half. We're early through super attendance report.
Right, yeah.
Excuse me, through, yes, through our, our reports.
Right, yes.
The rest of the agenda should fly by.
You see, now you just jinxed us.
All right. Um, so we have for new board business with the school board retreat on September ninth at five, do we have a place for that yet? Do you know?
We do not, uh, we will secure that. I think we were talking, we were not talking about, uh, who you want to get?
I, I mean, I think we're open to going wherever, but.
Yeah, so I think we're re, we're back, we'll, we'll zero in on.
Okay. All right, so ten of the, September ninth at five is what we've decided on, and hopefully we find a place for that date.
Well, we also have a regular meeting on the eleventh.
The school board, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, this is just the, this is just for the school board to get together, come up with our goals, do our, the beginning of the year stuff, no. No, it's just us and, and Dr. Ryan, yes, you're welcome. All right.
I, I won't be here that week.
Okay.
We heard.
Oh.
Oh, is that the same?
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I will be here Monday, maybe.
Do we have?
Yeah.
Do we, is it easier to find a place and find out the availability for dates? Or is it easier to find a date and then find a place to have it?
Um, if, if we could look at the sixteenth, which is just a, uh, then following Monday, we have availability for that.
Okay. Just double-check here. So.
Oh, yes.
September.
September.
Yeah, I got nothing on the sixteenth, so, myself, does that work for you guys?
Works for me.
Kendra and Wayne?
You.
Just one meeting a month, Wayne, right?
Wayne, one meeting a month.
I don't know who told you that, okay.
And that's at six o'clock?
We have five.
Five, okay.
I think we, we were pretty efficient last night.
Yeah.
Couple hours.
Yeah. I think we were good.
Then you turn longer, you compete so.
Probably. I mean, if A, if A went in Winchester's willing to host this sketch, that's, I don't think anybody had a problem with that.
I'm sure they would.
You know?
And we could even do it probably, because they're.
Oh, they're closing Monday, well, so we can see if that's possible.
We'll look into that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we did that. So board goal setting will be done at the retreat, so, there's not much to talk about there yet. And the updated calendar, can you tell me what changed?
Hmm, I know what changed.
Yeah, you want to share your perception of that, Kayla?
Yeah, we have to list Columbus Day as Columbus Day.
This day, yeah, that was the biggest thing I got out of it, too.
September tenth goes as a law, if we don't change on official document, the actual date or the actual name of the state-recognized legislative holiday. I don't know what happens to us, we, I don't know.
Something, a big, a king came down with the SWAT team.
I know that, like, the city of King changed it, but they only, that's what I understood anyway. So, King recognizes it as.
King.
Serious.
Most likely, no, he'll fight it.
Yeah.
He'll have to change it back.
Yeah.
So what we wanted to do, because the board has, board proves, are you proof of calendar, any edit to it?
Guys, your volume is messed up. And we can no longer hear you. Can you hear me?
Is it all of us or just Dr. Ryan?
Uh, it was you, Kayla, as well, but now we can hear you.
Now we're good?
Well, that is kind of. Oh, your battery?
Kayla's battery is low.
It's not green anymore, so you're picking my loud mouth up from other people. Thank you.
Yeah, and so, yeah, two, there are two potential calendar items. The first one is indigenous people, the second one is, uh, the general election. And the request from the town to utilize the gymnasium at the middle high school.
Right, I heard about that.
Yes, um, and so we, we see that request, is it okay if I muddle the two since it affects the calendar?
Yeah.
The only reason that it may affect the calendar is, is we're gonna have, that's gonna be a while back. I'm not so certain that we're built for the security for our students on school grounds with no parking for anyone coming to vote here, if we permit the town to move it from community center to gymnasium.
During the week.
That we close that Tuesday, we make that day. Or because we have the hours, not make that day.
What is their reasoning for moving it to here?
I think for the similar reason of being able to control the larger space, having some ability to park, having it away from the center of town, those are the reasons that.
It's the presidential election, so a lot more turnout.
So they're gonna get.
Community center is kind of, it's a tiny park, I mean, you can park on the road for days, but, yeah.
But anytime I've been to vote at the community center, uh, my wait has been thirty seconds, I mean, even during a presidential, so.
Right.
I mean, I don't understand why they have to use this big space, and if I'm not mistaken, they're going to voting machines, right? That's gonna be a lot quicker, too.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, I thought that was.
I think they purchase.
They'd like to come in the day prior, set up, so.
I think they, they were having a, a community session on the new voting machine. I didn't make it, but, I don't know, I just think there's never been really any congestion there since I've been voting there, so I don't understand why they have to use a bigger space when they don't get the volume anyways, that's just my opinion.
So what we, uh.
I agree, Mark, I agree that they got the machines.
So, um, that would, that would be my request, if the board agrees to permit the town to have the general election here that we not have school on, that would be both schools, that would be, that would be the whole campus.
Do we have, like, an explanation of the reasoning, other than it's just larger space and more parking?
Was it the select board who questioned it?
Um, I have some emails.
Just curious about more information on it, why?
Oh, that's.
Julie, Town Director.
She's like in charge of the. Voting.
I wonder, how big are these machines?
Yeah, that's another question.
Well, and where, I have so many questions, but I really wish I could have gone.
Do they need to be plugged in?
Right.
Is there?
They also said, using the ballot counting device for the first time, we are expecting lines to form, waiting to check out.
Right, yeah, I bet.
Longer because it's new.
So that's why.
That makes sense.
So we got this new expedited process.
Things, things slower, right, yeah. The learning curve on it is gonna be a bit, especially for our older population.
Into it, I thought.
It's me, too. I'm not the older population.
My story, and you just, you put it in yourself, and they get like a great checkmark, and then you go in the next piece, if there is more than one ballot.
So Julie did note that four years ago, the gymnasiums, students and teachers, and they are at school because, because of COVID.
COVID, oh, to space out, yeah, that makes sense.
And they were marking, didn't they mark off, yeah, yeah, it's all coming.
That makes sense.
That was only because of COVID.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, if we close the campus and close the campus.
I don't know, they're, they're saying they got these new machines, so to, to be more efficient and to quick, to quicken the process. Now they're saying it's gonna slow the process and they need bigger, bigger space. I mean, I'm not against of anything about helping the town, but it makes no sense to me. It just don't make sense to me, but that's just my opinion.
It's probably because it's the first year, there's a learning curve, and until they get it under their belt once, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, if you want, if you wanted my thought, uh, it's disruptive to us and it wasn't something that I was a client to agree to. Uh, but if the board wants to, obviously, we, we want to be good neighbors with the town, we want to be good partners.
Right.
It's a, this is a big one, isn't it?
Yeah.
And that's.
Almost like twenty-sixteen, that was crazy.
That's November, right?
From a safety perspective, if we were to let it use the building, it's just that we would have to cancel.
Right.
What day is the March, I'm sorry, I don't know. Tuesday.
November fifth.
Oh, we already have time off.
And it being, okay, so there's like, I'm gonna play devil's advocate here for a minute, we have a lot of days off in November. Already?
Yeah.
And to put another one in there, like, so I mean, if.
As a teacher, Tuesdays annoying.
Right.
So Friday.
Conferences. Right.
And then Monday, the eleventh is Veterans Day.
Right.
Which is a federal holiday, we're not permitted to.
Yeah.
PD Monday, Tuesday, uh, uh.
Before vacation.
Right, so they get that whole week.
So, yeah, is it disruptive?
Yeah, to do a Tuesday and a Friday, and teachers are prepping for conferences. So you go to school Monday, you're off Tuesday, and then Wednesday, Thursday. I, after, if we didn't have all of that going on, then I would say, fine. But with all of that, I don't think that's a good idea.
I'm.
I think that's too disruptive.
I know, I'm not, I'm still split fifty on it, only because, only because, I mean, yeah, on the, on the one hand, yeah, super disruptive. But I also can see where the town lot would kind of need it, you know what I mean?
I think it's a want and a need.
Yes.
That's what I'm curious, I guess that's what I need clarification on. I mean, if they are forced to do it in the, in the community center, can they make it work? Um, there's gonna be long lines, and there's really not a, not a place at the community center to have a long line. So I get that, not really, what are they gonna do, out the front?
Out the sidewalk.
I know, I was gonna say, and you really can go, it's like an L in there when you're voting.
Right.
So you got an L's worth of room, plus out, and then it is a straight sidewalk all the way down to sixty-three, so.
That's them coming in, the backup is gonna be them going out. And where is that line?
Okay, well then, switch it around and they can go out the doors and down the sidewalk.
They can't go out of the door without giving your, their vote, so they gotta be in the building until they give their vote out. So I'm seeing the logistics in my head.
I just, is it really gonna be that?
It's a presidential election, I mean, there's definitely way more voters that come out for a presidential election.
But it's putting your ballot into a machine.
I don't know.
Gonna be that.
I wasn't at the thing, I was out of town that day. I know, I wasn't at the informational meeting.
Do we have to vote for this? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's school closing.
We have to vote for this, one way or the other, and I'm, I'm. It's so hard. I mean, how are you guys feeling that aren't?
Uh, I think it's unnecessary and school does not need to close for voting, and it works in the community center, and I think we leave it.
I agree.
Let them figure it out.
Let them figure it out.
Well, I mean, I think people are gonna have to be patient, right? It is gonna be a learning curve, but to have, we're already on that Friday and Monday.
Right.
To throw in another Tuesday, that just makes things so wonky in a time of year where kids are already getting amped up about holidays and I just think the learning loss that is going to occur for convenience is not.
There's literally twelve learning days in that month.
Yeah.
Eleven, yeah.
I'd like to move it along for a vote if it's good.
Okay.
Move the question.
All right, so I need a motion to decline the town's request to use the gym for voting day.
Actually, we have, maybe you want to make it an affirmative, so the motion to approve the request. And then what would happen?
Oh, and we would, no, that's right.
Okay.
So I will make that motion, yeah. You could make that motion.
I, I could make that motion, I mean, I can make motions, the chair, you don't always do that, but. So I am, so, uh, I'm still undecided, so the, so, I, I will make a motion to, um, approve the town's request to use the gym on November fifth.
Okay.
I will make that motion, I need a second.
Oh, wait.
I need a second.
Anyone?
Anyone?
Oh, I'll second it.
Second. Wow.
Okay, any more discussion on it? Those in favor of, um, say aye? Those opposed?
No.
No?
No.
No.
Is Wayne still there?
Yes, no.
He voted no.
Yes, he's there, no on the vote.
Yes.
Yes, I'm here, no, and my vote is no.
Okay. So moved. Thank you, that was a tough one.
Steven?
Yes.
When you or Maria reached back out to them, can you clarify if they still want student volunteers?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
And regretfully, if we could make it work, we would, it's the days of the school year.
Yeah, no brainer.
Yeah, because March is an easy month.
April even.
No school November has a nickname for a reason.
May, there's nothing in May.
Um, so, and those, so those are the two items for the calendar, um.
So we need to approve the calendar.
By law, we have to go back to Columbus Day, and we do not have to touch it for general election. So, um, do not need a motion.
Okay.
Because it's a legislative.
Yeah, we have to do it anyway. Yes. Okay. All right. Yep.
Right.
Yep, so voting, November, E-Rate, funding, handbooks, we're down to handbooks. Which one do we want to talk about first? School student handbook, right, is that one of them? That we're talking, are we talking about all three of them today? Handbooks, because there are three, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we sent to you, yeah, we wanted to present them to you. Um, and.
Yeah, this means the student handbooks were sent separately, I'm trying to find mine now. Yeah, okay, I'm not gonna bother even bringing them up, because it's gonna be too much.
Day. Wait, I mean, the middle high school handbook seems to be. I have middle high school.
Well, see, I have elementary school, but not middle high school.
I can't find any of them.
The agenda has been updated on the website, when Maria sent it to me, I combined all the documents, the one, so if you just go to the agenda on the website, it's all spread out to the. So if you're.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Oh, yeah.
All right. We need to approve those handbooks, yes?
No, no, you do not, because the, the district handbook is the one that you approve, the school handbook's approved by.
And we're still working on the district.
But we certainly, yes.
So that's.
But we certainly want questions regarding anything that you see in the handbook that you either would need clarification on or have, have a thought about, gosh, that doesn't look right, or you have a question about, that's why the two principles would be able to answer those.
So I will admit, I was on vacation and didn't have time to look at all of them.
They're fantastic, I just want to put that out.
I may have, is it okay to send questions and/or save it till next month for questions? Is it okay to send questions and or save it till next month for questions? I mean, they're already gonna have them, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, you gotta go out, but I, I think sending questions, I.
That'd be okay?
Happy to respond.
If I have.
Of course.
Yes.
If there's things you'd like to highlight out of them that you.
And I'll just say, like, they're living documents, and I have a disclaimer at the start of mine that basically says. We, we might change this at any time due to a meeting, we'll let you know if something's significant. So if the board were to come to me at the next meeting and say, we want you to change X, or, you know, recommend, then I. Would certainly be open to that and happy to answer questions at any time.
So we wanted to make it more. More. There was a lot of.
Wanted to decentralize.
Yeah.
School specific.
And so we did shunt off quite a bit of the overarching stuff to the district one and tried to be specific in our own procedures, protocols that were like a little.
Yeah.
A little bit different. Um, and then, but there is still some redundancy between our, the two, because maybe it didn't quite mean, need to be district, but it was something important. For the elementary school one, I did try to chunk information together that had previously been in different locations, um, so, um. Field trips and lunch, there were a couple that were like. It said different things, but maybe in three different spots, so I've tried to get data all together.
More user friendly.
Yeah, so in that way, it may look quite different, but is, is really an organization in a lot of ways. Um. A couple of things I wanna highlight, uh, we're going to have a walking field trip form, um, that folks can sign for the year, so that kids can go to the library, they can come over here. They, you know, who want to go downtown, the, the teacher would just communicate that that's a trip that's coming up. But we'll have a walking field trip form, so parents don't have to re-sign it every single time.
That's nice.
So that's under field trip section, and I did review the policy first and talked to Dr. Ryan, something I've used before, so, um. The, uh, attendance piece was significantly overdraft, uh, overcalled and, and quite frankly rewritten, um. For the reasons that we talked about, um, and include, um, tiers of support and things that may happen. They're not in any particular order, we have to think about the situation that's, um, in front of us and what that may mean. But this way, our staff and parents wholly know the, the main menu of things we may. Need to do on one end, is it, we're looking at truancy and just ways we can support everybody. Um. To that end, we would like to tighten up, it's our, it's our responsibility to make sure that we have accurate attendance. Um, so if, um, kids are late, they need to be signed in by an adult in the main office. And not to send in, same with dismissals, sign out, um, in the main office. Um, that was there, but I guess wasn't always the procedure, so I just wanna highlight that a little bit. Um, the, um. Other, and we went over the dis- the dismissal, we're only thinking, um. But I think, um, we, we also aligned our, um, discipline things by levels. Um, but developmentally, some things that are a level five for her, maybe not for me.
Right.
And my son or so.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, crying or a loud voice. The nature of a five-year-old.
Right.
So, um, so a lot of the same behaviors, um, but maybe in a slightly different spot of how we handle it, so we did take care, but it is similar, so. Kids and parents moving from the elementary school to the middle high school. There, they.
Some consistency.
Understand what the levels mean and what we may do related to that and what, and there's teaching always paired with discipline. Um, so that was like, kind of, the stuff.
Highlights.
On our side anyways.
Yeah, I, mine is significantly reorganized from what it was before, it was all in alphabetical order. Um. But now it's more organized by, like, this is the academic part, this is the code of conduct part. Um, and I did expand upon the rationale that goes before the tier disciplinary model, um, within the code of conduct, and then, um. What was three tiers, I expanded to five, but still the same model of progressive discipline, and as Molly said. Um, always having three parts to, uh, France to discipline, which would be the education, some kind of punitive. And then our sort of piece is really important to me, so, um, and then added, um. Kind of, at each level, how staff will respond, how administration will respond, and what our expectations of students are at each level. Um, some of what's in here is, um, contingent upon policies changing, so obviously, policies don't change and I will revert. Um, the speci- specific to the dress code really. Um. But. A lot of stuff I just left, uh, left the same with some minor editing, because I really need to, um, get more of a pulse of the culture before I. Think about other changes that might benefit the student.
And the first sixteen pages are the district handbook, but it's now gonna change because the calendar has to be adjusted and there will have to be a few employee names that change. Uh, for district, uh, schools, and so what I'd like to do is make those edits, uh, Laurie and I, we can reschedule that. That would be the one that we're watching it kind of read through.
Yeah.
Yeah, approve and correct.
Okay.
But I think the school handbooks, they're, um, a lot of, a lot of work, and then we sat as a large group and we brought in other. Uh, staff members who have some impact on those handbooks to be able to review them, make comments, make suggestions, and so it was a much larger team.
Good.
Great.
Thank you. I know that's a lot of work. All right. Any, any questions from, for anybody on the handbooks for the schools?
Uh, I'm just a little concerned about the. Attendance policy in the elementary school one, the tier three, I think is going to not sit well with families in the way some of it reads. I think it's a little like, it's a lot of educator lingo, so I think it's gonna be. Confusing for a lot of people and seeing chins and DCYF is going to set. A lot of our parents off, I think. And the SRO, the, I just think it's, it feels a little heavy.
Um, a piece that's.
Um. Hold on, Kendra.
Um, is ahead of those tiers, um, a level of communication that happens ahead of time? So, um, there's a timeline of communication, um, that, um, at, at numbers of unexcused or excused. Um, absences and, and it says when those things would be, could be explored, as I said, there, this is nothing on here as a have-to or in any order of have-to. But the reality is, there is a truancy law that we, we do need to be, um, implemented and, and adhered to. Um, and that's, that's the. That's the on-ramp. So.
Sure, maybe else?
No, I just, well, and like, the, like, that's just some of the wording, I think, we could. I think it's gonna be a little bit hard to. Understand.
I haven't looked at it, so.
Can I recommend a suggestion that Kayla may take a stab at rewriting some of it and sending it along?
Yes.
As a recommendation, maybe?
Yeah.
Tales like chants and stuff that need to be in there, but the truancy law recommending that we have to abide by the truancy law. Something like that.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. So ha- happy to make the adjustments.
I think, uh, it's better.
But I, I do think it is. It, it's a, it's a, it's a. It's a thing that we need to address, um, and, um, we're doing a root cause analysis for, um, under special education for some of our. The reasons that, that are potential reasons for our lower test scores. Attendance has to be addressed.
Kendra?
Um, I just. Were struggling to like, we obviously can't see anything, so we're just trying to find the wording for me. I do. Agree that our attendance has to be addressed and we have to ensure that our students are there, um. I also agree with Kayla that it's a, it's a touchy subject, because I know in the past, like. Because of. How it's written or whatever the, um. Faculty will come at you like while you're going on vacation, like, well, you can't do that, well. It, it is, it is a touchy subject with, with parents, I know in the past. You know, I've been told that there are gonna be unexcused absences and that my children cannot go, well. My children will go and they can have unexcused absences if that's what it is, it's, I think it's really, I got super defensive. So I think it's really important that we're very careful on how we word it so that our parents aren't defensive like I was, because I was like. And if you wanna speak to me like that and treat me like that, when my children are in school consistently and. They do have good grades and you know I'm involved, I will not even send in a no and you can figure that piece out as well, like. I, I got super defensive, so I know that if we're not careful, we're going to have parents that are gonna come in and just be. The same that I was back. Then as an early on mom, you know, I, it's. I agree, I mean, the, the wording's gotta be really careful, but we also have to be really like forward and, and, and honest, so I'm, I think it's, it's a hard. It's a hard way and we've gotta be sensitive, but yet not. I don't, I don't know, it's.
And I.
I, I can't see the wording, but I, I have a feeling if it's like, if it sounds like, I don't know, threatening, I can't remember now, like with true and like with DCYF. Like, we're gonna call DCYF on you, I mean, that's not a real good way to build a good rep- rapport with parents.
Um, a piece of what you brought with the, the trips, that was a piece that, um, I made sure to add in and give more clarification, because I. Definitely wanna support, you know, once in a lifetime amazing activities that kids can do. Um, and put in a way for them to be able to make planned arrangements so that those become excused absences. And that hadn't been, um, kind of clear or articulated, so I, I expanded that to make sure that, um. We do, um, and, and it was public, I, I actually had a request already for something thi- this fall, so months in advance. Um, and I was able to talk with that, um, that family and, you know, what are some things that we can do, and so we have a plan in place and. Those will shift to, to excuse, because the world around us is educational. Um, and so, uh, the real, the real sticky one around the truancy is the unexcused absence. So, but we want to make sure that we're supportive, um, particularly, you know, if we have excused absences due to health. Um, that parents know that we, we have a nurse, um, on the staff, we have, um, we can, if there's an ongoing medical issue that are, that's impacting school. Is that something that our special education department should be looking at or? Throw five oh four plan, so trying to make sure that we're supportive in those ways, and that's why we have those frequent check-ins, but. Gladly make it, I would say softer, but more, more accessible to anybody, happy to look at recommendations.
Anything else on the truancy part of the?
Do you know what page the truancy part is, or it's when, I'm sorry, I'm trying to like scroll through Wayne's phone, trying to find it.
Sort of goes, uh, page ten to page thirteen.
Okay. Oh, yeah, excuse, attend, okay. All right, I, I did find it, you, you can continue and I'll just browse through it to see the wording, sorry. I didn't, I don't remember reading earlier, Kayla, where it had said. The DCYF piece.
That's tier three, so it's like the last thing, but it was like even for ten excused absence.
Oh, I do see it, okay.
And even though it's, it's not in order, those last three are planned, they're the last three.
Right. Um, I just think people say it's gonna be like, oh, I just know from experience talking to parents, they. DCYF is definitely a hot button.
I actually am okay with that wording, I feel like it's not sentence, it's bulleted, so it doesn't, it doesn't sound threatening, I, I'm, I'm, I like the wording, actually.
Anything else on that?
Nope.
Okay. Was there anything, any other questions on the, um. Handbooks themselves?
Um, I have a question. Um, there was the discussion a little bit about, uh, discipline, I think it was for the middle high school. Um, I was just curious.
I'm sorry, I don't wanna, I just wanna interrupt you, uh, are you the community member, Miriam?
Yes.
So we'll have a spot coming up at the end where you'll be able to make this comment, if that's okay?
Okay.
Just keep things moving. Thank you. All right. So then, no other thing on that? On them, so we can move forward from that, that I know that the. School board one, we're working on this, the.
Employee.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the one that's, that was brought to us was the one from twenty twenty-two, it's the one that's in here, so there'll be some changes to that coming forward soon. All right. And there's nothing on MR and handbooks, then we're up to policies, first readings. Were there any changes to these policies? As our first readings from the original?
Um, so. So.
Other than, other than that they've been updated, it says updated, but there's no like highlights or anything on them, so I'm unsure if anything's changed in the policies.
There were no, the only one that I would say had a significant change. Would be JICA student dress code.
Right. So I would like to see, I would like to see these poli- that there's changes to these policies with like. Highlights and strikeouts, so we can know what's changed.
We were led to believe that the board wanted the clean version, because we have all of those.
Well, for the first reading, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the corrections and stuff.
No.
And then as a second reading, they can be clean.
Yeah. Kendra sat through every one of those policies.
Twice.
Right. Because I, I mean, unless I bring them all up and like have them side by side, I'm not gonna know what's changed in them, and I just would like to see the changes.
I totally understand that, yeah, so we were led to believe you just wanted the clean one.
Yeah.
I, I'm.
Second version, final version, yes.
What if we were to do that, um, and we can either make it part of our September board meeting, so you have all of them with all the, the changes, or the retreat, either one?
I can, it doesn't really matter to me either one.
Should we do our first reading today?
I mean, you can do the first reading.
Reading, have the changes, because I mean, we still have time at that point.
Right?
So then we could still get the.
Yeah.
Still get it moving.
Yeah, I mean, if we get them sometime between now and the September meeting, then we'll can see all those changes and. Can finalize them at the second, for the second meeting.
Perfect.
If that works for everybody, does that work for you guys?
Yeah, Dr. Ryan, I don't want another copy.
Kendra knows.
No, they, I mean, honestly, I feel like they all did so well and there was just such little changes here and there, like the wording, but. Like you said, the dress code was huge, but I feel like they did so, oh my gosh, they're so good.
It's a lot of work, yeah, for sure.
Thank you, Kendra, do you wanna leave the conversation, like, I know you love to?
Leave, oh, on the dress, on the dress code?
Any of them, really?
Right on through the policies?
No, because I don't have my, my thing that in the other room, my policy book here, but I, I feel like really the, the one that I was most. Upset about and the one with the big changes is the dress code, um, and I feel like. Uh, and it did such a good job in taking into account the student feelings on it, the. Way that the world has changed and how we look at dressing nowadays, how we look at how to represent ourselves and what's respectful and what's. Counted, you know, as not disrespectful anymore, and so, um. I feel like she did a really wonderful job and. Changed it that we can have hats. And I feel like kids will be super impressed and happy with that and. Um, and it's very short and to the point, and there's, I feel like no confusion in it anymore, so I was impressed.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, I did like it.
Leaps and bounds better. I'm still, I'm not super thrilled with the word modest, but I'll do it.
Modest?
Yeah.
At least it applies to both genders now. At least it applies to both genders now.
No, it doesn't.
It, well, the way I read it.
Modest, I mean, but really.
I know.
Guys are not told to dress modest, only only females, so, but I can, it's better, so.
Yes. Alright, so we need a motion to accept these as a first reading.
We're doing a whole.
We can, we can do them all together. I feel like, right?
You can do it as a consent.
Yes.
And if there's some, there's one that uh board member wishes to pull off. To discuss, you could then um pull that off, the consent, all the others get approved for first reading and then discuss that. That one, or two you pull up.
And there's always time to do that at the next meeting.
Always, and and they're not in the manual until board's agreed on it.
Okay, so I, so if if we're all good with doing them as a group, is everybody good with them as a group? Does anybody wanna pull anyone out? Anyone of them out?
Yes, I'm good.
I'm good, I'm good.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept these policies as first readings as a group.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion on them? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? So moved, I waited to hear that Wayne.
Yes, that's the schedule, uh we're working on uh the remaining part of the manual, so this represents. About half of the policies that are required by law to be updated. The other half, we're gonna do now, now that we've got the fall legislative update, we can make sure that we're right up to. You know, August, whatever, twenty twenty four, so we'll have those, probably not for September because we'll wanna do the second read. On needs and probably for October, but we'll have a policy committee.
And I didn't check my list, did this include the stuff that we have to do at the beginning of every year also? Like, there's always policies we have to do like every year, okay, that's, I didn't check my list against it, but, okay, perfect. Alright, so that's done, we go in, right?
Yep.
Okay, so uh job description, final reading for the multi-tiered system of support coordinator for H T Ls. I know.
Were there any questions regarding that position?
Not for me. I gotta get into my next packet, sorry. Cuz half the policies are in that one, too. Three, three, we're almost there. Let's see if it does it for me. There we go, okay. So any questions about the? That job description, thank you. Well, you know what, I did have a question about policy, I'm sorry, that I forgot to ask. I know, it's a quick one, do the bus drivers get their policy every year to sign it? It looks like there's a signature thing at the bottom of the policy for the um school bus drivers.
We weren't sure that they do.
Good question.
Yes.
Good question.
Um and I wasn't gonna ask cuz we're doing another reading, but since you brought it up, I will. So the way the policy reads, should we be testing anybody who's transporting students or is it specific? To bus and van drivers, the way the policy, the the title sounds like just bus and van. But then the way the policy read was like anybody who's transporting children. So I just wasn't sure about that.
Be helpful if I pull the policy up.
And also.
It's E E A E A. I wrote it down.
Me too.
Cause we look that up.
And do we do that or is that for students responsibility?
So images were made to this policy including contracted carriers. Certified in RSA three seventy six two, indicating provisions. That both bus drivers and contracted carriers. Additionally, referenced to the federal requirements related to driving and alcohol serving. So if I recall, did did we not check on that to see if it was? Charters and um individual special education transportation drivers.
Yep, I did reach out to um a carrier that I've worked with before, a large. What they do to comply with this, the state law and the policy, all bus drivers must have a pre-employment drug screen. Okay, the company has a third company, third party company do a poll of names every quarter, so. Then they'll do random throughout, which I mean is typical of most places. Um and then there's a certain percentage that has to be tested each year for a a public carrier. Um for the small bus drivers um that have their school bus certificates, they would not um be entered in. As a um non-D O two employer, their screening's a little different, but the process would be the same. So pre-employment and then random. We only have one or two in our employ.
That, we're responsible for that. Anyone that we contract with this event, there is responsibility.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a paragraph in the policy that actually spells that out in pretty simple terms.
Cause that was a question that we we had.
Yes, same question.
This was my task.
Okay, good. Alright, thank you, I'm sorry to jump back to that.
That's okay, we're on our toes.
This is what happens when it's on a paper, cuz on paper I'd have it written right next to it. Okay, I also have to jump back to technology too, but I won't do that now. So we need, should we make them, do we get a motion? For the, for the, for the uh job description.
I think I made the motion, Maria's not here, I don't know what I.
I know, she's gonna have to watch this and do the notes, did you realize that, right? Thank God, cuz I was like, if I'm supposed to be writing notes, I'm not doing it.
Okay, so, so just in case, I will make a motion to accept this group of policies.
No, we didn't do policies, now we're on the job description.
No, we haven't, no, we haven't.
Okay, I didn't think we did.
We haven't gotten that far.
Thank you, I'm getting old. Hard to remember everything.
We went back to post.
Okay, so uh final, I needed a motion to accept the final reading for the job description for the multi-tiered system of support. For the coordinator for H T S.
I make that motion.
Wait, here's a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any more, just, any discussion to be had for the job description? You guys good, Wayne, Kendra? If they're, if they're talking, I don't know, they hear us.
Yes.
Yes, we're just having issues with our phones.
That's okay, um so all those in favor?
Aye.
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 So moved, thank you. Alright, so uh in other business, I'll ask my technology question. Um so in the old system, divorced parents couldn't both get the notifications, can they both get the notifications now? For one student?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that's good.
It's, it's gonna be, not only can we do that, it's also super flexible to accommodate. Any other weird little nuances we may run across.
Oh, good.
Where school messenger did not offer.
No, yeah, that was the, that was a big contention point with a lot of parents who don't live in the same household. That one parent would get it and not tell the other parent and then they wouldn't know what was going on and they had the kid and he was supposed to be somewhere and wasn't.
We we customize it, but how it's set up right now is in Power School, anybody that has lives with. Or the custody boxes checked within Power School under contact, get the messaging. So we need to make sure that's all clean, but um and accurate, but yes, it will allow for that. And then we can also add on others.
Yeah, cuz I know on the form, it's like, you know, you could, there's like only one like preferred phone number, so there'd be like. Two preferred phone numbers at that point, if they wanted to get a text, say, right, and that's doable with the new system?
Right, and anybody can on, will be, I'm not sure what the timeline is, but. There's a opt-in, there'll be a number that they, you know, it's a five or six digit number.
Yep.
They can say yes to opt-in, even if. Yeah, I think if anybody comes in, so if you get messaging, even if you don't get your.
Right.
Or if you wanna know our so days.
Right.
Well, and then like grandparents and.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that's when I, you have that number listed, so I read that from home today, so I'll get those messages.
My um my other question um with the messaging for that was the email I got today. Didn't have any. Like families that don't have i- internet access, like how are they filling out their forms for the beginning of school? And do we know those families so we can get them that, like a paper version of the before-school? Forms to be filled out, cuz the one I got, the email I got today had no option for that. Or didn't rec, didn't say like contact the school if you don't have, you know what I mean, if you don't have access to that, and I'm as. I'm assuming that we have families that don't have access to that kind of technology, so. I I just wanna make sure they're getting this message, that there's gonna be forms that are not mailed to them. Or and they have to contact a school or we're mailing out those forms to them, cuz we know they don't, like, I. I don't know logistics, but I'm just curious to make, I wanna make sure. Everybody has the information they need before the school starts and they get the forms and that they need to put up.
Actually, both Erica and Kathy were part of our new book, and also talked about annual perp notices, which is what we're talking about in all of the documents.
Yeah.
And they were uh, they said that they would plan to have printed copies and be able to either, families see the contact, they can go, you can mail them or deliver.
But how do they know that, like, that's my.
So as information comes back in, my understanding is going to be accounting for the interest of students, and so anyone who hasn't submitted information back. We're gonna know who they are, so the reach out then.
What happened there, okay.
Our um our open house, um we're, I'm gonna see if we have um computers. Accessible and that will be there too, so that'll be an option.
To fill them out that night.
That's a great idea.
That is a good idea.
Very good idea.
From the, they get information on the the newsletter and I know, like, a lot of people are using their phones or internet and filling out a form is tricky.
Yeah, right.
Um so have that open and, but I haven't even talked to Justin, so I'm saying that, but um.
So in reality, some kids won't have their paperwork filled out for their first day of school, which is, it happens every year, I know, but.
And our open house is two nights before then, so then if something comes up, but um. A a piece that's important to to your point around who's getting things. We we use those forms and enrollment pieces to feed into Power School. The lists that are being used for, right, are from Power School, so. We have an old email address or um an email address for one parent and other parent that still will be. A a thing, so I really want the updated information, um but um my my uh. My first uh newsletter from two weeks ago, I had a hundred and seventy-five views this past week, a hundred and twenty-five. So it's getting out there, um so. And you better do. No. Um but um so in that, we're using the same platform that um Dr. Ryan uses, that's more.
And so I guessing um communication-wise, I want. Parents, like, it's been a practice in the past that both parents can't get information, now they can. I wanna get that messaging out there to make sure that those parents know that now, contact the school. Give us your, give us your information, I'll put something on Community Connections, but again, that only reaches so far, but I just wanna get that. That information out there to parents too, so they know now, we're we're good, we can get ya. You know, so, so that, that's, I think that's good.
Something out, maybe an all-call.
I think that would be great.
Since phone number's more likely to be updated.
Yeah.
Like, hey, we we sent out this email if you don't have internet access or you haven't received it yet. Check it with the school, you know, either for printed copy or stuff that you read.
Yeah, and hopefully like parents that get that, that the other parent doesn't have the phone number on there, they'll communicate that to them, which would be nice.
But I think an all-call.
It would be nice, I know, doesn't always happen, but if some, some get along really well.
So I I have very little involvement in the digitizing and things about that, providing tools and I. Like help work over it and make sure things are digitized, but how it is all flowing.
Right.
I've had very little involvement in forms in the past, so we're trying to continue with that, like, just using technology as a tool. Delivery mechanism, but I helped set up the backend, but I have very little data.
Yeah.
So I don't have many answers for fun.
Yeah.
I think an all-call is a perfect, to get the info out to people.
The state's been out there for a week, they haven't got it yet, check in with us.
Great, perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. Alright. Um I didn't have anything else, no, I didn't have any other business, did anybody else have anything else for other business? Kendra, Wayne, you good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, so moving on. We have committee reports, behavioral support team.
We have not met.
Budget committee, we met, uh where's my note, budget committee, we met July eighth. Um to discuss having a special town meeting to vote on purchasing the old church on Plain Road for the new fire station. Um it has, it had to go up to the state for approval for having a special town meeting, I don't know what happened since then, so. I haven't gotten a date for new town meeting or anything, so um that will be coming. Sure.
When the budget thing's gonna be, I'll make sure I'm on those emails, I never received any last year and I just wanna make sure because. Even if it's not directly school-related, there's a lot of information that I can give them now, like, we're already rolling on the budget.
Yeah.
Um so, I, you know, I.
I'll tell them again.
It helps me to be able to address them as we're all.
I'll try to remember to forward the email to you when I get it.
Yeah.
I don't know, ways, but, I know, I'm sorry.
No, it's not you.
Okay. Um any questions on that at all? Community connections, we're at the beginning of school, so any information for school-related stuff, I'd love to post, so let me know.
Hey, ma'am, chair, just as a uh word to the two principals, typically, the chair would permit staff to head home. Knowing that a lot of this didn't work, but there is a community member who wants to ask about a handbook, so.
Yeah.
They say, and it's the technology, just Justin's assistant's made sure of that, so, sorry, guys, not tonight.
Or can we pop forward and set us some comments and then do this, just to be nice?
I mean, we could, but, this'll be quick.
Yeah, I mean, nothing is really meant.
Yeah, no, so facilities.
That, that one I'm not on anymore as well.
It's just me.
Yep.
Hey, Jane.
Yeah.
Uh, we haven't had a facilities committee meeting since uh the new director took over, correct?
No, I think our last meeting was in May, so I think the next one's probably gonna be at some point, um I'm thinking September, October. To hit that first or third quarter of the year, first quarter.
Alright, sounds good, I I just know that when we were in, changing over to the new maintenance director, that we weren't gonna have any more meetings until. Everything kinda got in place.
Yep, yep, and um he's, he's working diligently right now on a seat grant that I think he'd like to be able to talk to you, the facilities committee about.
Alright, sounds good.
Alright, uh HASP advisory.
We have not met.
Just last year, right? Uh legislation.
Kendra, do you know when our next HASP meeting is?
Uh yep, it is uh nine eleven.
It's right before the.
Yeah.
Uh legislation, I got an email two days ago with all the updated legislation list, which I have not had time to look at. But I know that they signed over fifty bills, so there's a ton going on. Yeah, I, I know, I heard about a couple, but, so I'll have more information next meeting. Uh personnel, we're going over the S A U handbook, staff handbook. Um and we'll have more on that coming up, I don't think there's, and we're getting ready for negotiations with the teachers union, so. Um I haven't heard if they approve those dates that we set aside yet or not, we haven't heard anything back, okay.
I did reach out, um and um I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
I talked with UNISERV director uh at another meeting in another district that we participated. And she's not heard from H F T either.
Okay.
And so she didn't have the dates today.
Okay.
Otherwise, they were scheduled.
Uh the sixteen, seven.
Yeah, something like that.
Fifteen, sixteen, seven.
Alright, uh policy committee, Kendra, thank you for doing all that work on the policies.
We went over all that.
And continued work, you didn't have anything to add, did you?
Uh, no. We already went over it.
Yeah. Uh portrait of a learner.
We are, well done. I think we're still meeting yearly though, right? Is that what?
We are. We're waiting on the graphic to be, Mr. Benson was, as in Ms. Thompson's report, Mr. Benson has students working on whatever the graphic's gonna be that represents our work trouble learner, we'll meet again.
In the meat of getting it going is gonna start, right?
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's our north star now, so everything that we do kind of goes in that direction.
Perfect. Uh, select board representative?
Yeah, I pretty much will admit, I talked a month ago, I often want to, and they went to their every others for the summer, but I do intend on going to them starting this month when I get back from vacation.
Perfect. Um, staff development.
Once we get past the steering committee meeting for strategic planning, when we have some teachers who have come back and expressed interest in being on the P D N P, I'm gonna recommend that we do have a reach out to Kayla, a set of meetings to kind of outline what that looks like, and the direction that we're gonna go in. So we're just, just about there. It'll go up fast.
Yeah. Uh, tuition exploratory committee, we talked about that already, yeah.
And wellness, we finished our work up in, at the end of the year, so. We, when moving to, cause I know we do have the wellness policy fair is going on too in September, so. Should we, well, there's a subcommittee for that.
Yep, yeah, but we have policies that we're working on to be, that were brought forth under the Wellness Law Director, we'll be coming up. I'm thinking September, maybe October, when everybody's back and going, it's required three meetings a year, so. And, but we wanna get those policies made headway, but I think we all have a few things left to get, and interested.
I went those pretty, went through those pretty quickly. Were there any questions on any, I'm sorry?
Goodness.
No. Okay, so we're up to citizens' comments. We know that the, Miriam is still online, yes?
Yes, hi, Miriam Tallman. I'm sorry about interrupting before, I didn't have the minutes or the agenda in front of me. So I had a question, I'll have a couple of questions, so it's gonna kind of bounce back and forth. My first question is with the discipline. I guess it's talking more about the middle high school, but I guess it's just a question with the district. If there's verbiage that also includes special ed or children with special needs who may not, you know, understand, or they cannot control sometimes their actions? I was just curious about that, how that factors in with the discipline.
Yeah, to my knowledge, there's definitely that language in there. I don't know if the principals wanted to speak more to that.
Yeah, so what I can say is that the, all of our responses are discretionary, so we take those things into account. And one of, part of the student expectation is that we can help them understand the impact of their behavior. So that work shifts, if it's a student with special needs and needs a little more support with that. And then also at, at various levels, we would be including special ed staff in the conversations to make sure that students are supported. And then through special ed regulation and parent rights, there's special protections to understand any manifestation of the disability as a root cause of the behavior, or if there was a failure to implement the I P which resulted in that behavior, there's separate protections under the Special Education procedural handbook.
Okay, thank you. My other question is, I'm okay with the new drop-off pickup, but I do have a question. If a child has special, I guess, pickup or drop-off instructions from the special ed team, if that's communicated to the principal and staff, so that like when the first day of school starts, if we're still following the previous year's pickup and drop-off instructions?
Yes, so if you're talking to me at the elementary school, I'm meeting with Lisa, the coordinator, next week, and we'll double-check all the procedures that we're talking about, and any unique plans that we need to have at our morning start, the outside start and arrival. I, I do have notes, and it's not in this handbook, it's for our staff to know what, that the one-to-one, if there's a one-to-one need, that needs direct connection at a car door, or at the van, or minibus, that those staff will be there where they're supposed to be to have that direct connection with that child and support them walking in and moving to where they need to go. So I am double-checking all that with Lisa next week, but in definitely making sure that we support all of our learners in whatever arrival or dismissal plans they need to have.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification, and my last question is, well first, it's to really say, you know, I think the school district has been doing a really great job, and, you know, a couple of months ago during the previous school year, there was the incident in Hinsdale where there was a police chase, and then it was, it was an armed subject running around the community, and it was a really scary time. So I really do have to credit the school district for their response. I think it was really great. Just working on that, I was just wondering if the school district has any plans to maybe increase security in regards to maybe cameras within the district, both outward-facing, but also within the buildings? I come from an emergency management safety background, so, you know, that's why I was just thinking, you know, heaven forbid, you know, something happened on the campus or within the buildings. You know, the camera systems would be a very vital tool to first responders, so I was just wondering if maybe the district has any plans to do an audit and maybe increase safety and security measures?
We just had an audit done two years ago, and this year, I know that we added inside cameras to both schools, I believe. Just the high school, just the middle high school, sorry. And there was discussions about outdoor cameras too, so I'm not sure.
They have them.
Yeah, they have them at the, we have them, I know already, but.
We have outdoor.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
May I add?
Yeah, absolutely.
Miriam, I don't know if you were logged in for my report, but I did discuss, we're reconvening a school security and student safety committee for our campus, with several stakeholders on that committee, meet three times a year to work through the homeland security audit that we had done, as well as all of the improvements that we have made and those that we may need to add to. I know where you work part-time, and you and I have already had this discussion, so it may be helpful to us to have a conversation about you being part of that committee, if you'd be open to it, because I know your background would be very helpful to us.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, sorry, I did miss the beginning of the school board meeting, but yeah, I'd be open to that.
That's all right. If you let me know, we can do the ninety-minute opening for you at another time.
You can, you can re-watch the video.
Thanks, Miriam.
Did you have anything else, Miriam?
Um, no, that was it. I just wanted to say thank you again for everyone within the school district. Looking forward to another school year, and, you know, it's really a great place, and I think everyone's doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you for joining in, Miriam. Donna, did you have anything for?
I have one.
Yep.
I probably should have brought it up under new business, but I just wanna say, as the title line coordinator, thank you, Dr. Ryan. Yesterday, Dr. Ryan arranged for training for our administrators that are going to be part of the title line process, the investigator, wingman, you know, however you wanna go about it, but so that we're all aware of that process. And I've done many title line trainings, I've got, and maybe now because I'm the coordinator, it's like, okay, I gotta pay attention, but I don't think that was it. We had awesome trainers, just, I, I can't say enough, and I just wanna say thank you to Dr. Ryan, because I feel ten times better than I did before.
Yeah, great.
It was a really good training.
And then we went to lunch at the Garrett Back Room. Brought everybody into the city.
There you go.
It was a great day.
Nice.
It was fun for me.
Nice.
Oh, Wayne, I meant to ask you at this, during the select board portion, did, did you guys set up the meeting for the M O U for the fields? With Karen?
Yes, and I, I was expecting the drafts to be emailed to everybody. I'm actually gonna touch base with Heather again when I get back from vacation, because we had two meetings. Not a ton of stuff was changed, it was kind of one of those things, they moved some things around, changed some names. A lot of great discussions between our road agent, Bob Trues, Robert Truesdale, and Nate Atwin, the director of Facility Mans, they opened up a pretty good conversation and exchanged numbers, and they've been doing a lot of talking. I was actually expecting Heather to send us all the copies for us to approve, but I haven't seen that yet.
Oh, so we might have it for the next meeting then, September's?
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna ask Heather what's going on with that when I get back next week.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Wayne.
Yep.
You sure?
I don't know if everyone has met Nate.
No.
He asked me about coming tonight, it says it's not expected, but I may ask him to come to the next meeting so that you can, you can talk to him.
That'd be great.
I had that written down. Is he gonna be coming to the meetings regularly, or?
Um, no, I mean.
They don't normally.
Asked in the past about the facilities director, but certainly at any time you need something or have a question, he's vocal, he's right here.
Absolutely.
Good guy.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Really good.
Once upon a time, we did. I think so, yeah. There wasn't a whole lot, unless there's something going on.
I'd love to keep it as an ask-me-to-be.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be super helpful, certainly at the finance, facilities committee meetings.
Yeah.
And then if there's additional, you know, if the facilities committee thinks, gosh, you know, how that could use you at the board meeting to explain this.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Perfect.
But I, I will ask you to come to the next meeting, cause I'd like you to.
It would be nice.
That'd be awesome.
Thank you. Was there anything else before we go into non-public? Okay, so then I need.
All good here.
I need a motion to go into non-public under.
R S A ninety-one eight-three-two-C, matters which have discussed in public would likely affect adversity, the reputation of any person, blah, 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 you can write the rest down, Maria.
I will make that motion with that R S A.
With the blah, blah, blahs.
Yeah, even add that in.
Second it.
All those in, roll call, rather?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes, yay.
Kendra?
And I said yes.
Okay, I didn't hear you, sorry. I missed it. So we're in on public, so.
Justin, you stopped the recording.
Yeah. Yeah.
Karen, thank you, you can have a good night.
Thank you, Karen.
Principals, you don't have your set?